We're going to call our meeting to order for Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. The invocation will be led by Pastor Brad Hall from First Baptist Church here in Palatka, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Pickens. If everyone would rise, please. Pastor Hall, if you'll come to...
Let's pray. God, as we come before you this morning, we thankful for this day you've given us, Lord, and just thankful for the meeting of the leaders here in Putnam County in our community, God, that have been called by you and chosen and elected to serve. And, God, as we come together, we just, we ask, Lord, for your continued provision. Lord, we know we have needs, great needs, in this community, in this county, that need to be met. We've had a lot of things that have gone on that have made the needs grow. And, Lord, we feel like, a lot like Jesus' disciples when they saw the multitudes and all they had was a few loaves of bread and a few fish, Lord, to feed them with, and they said, "What is it among so many?" So, Lord, with these needs in mind, we're thankful for the things you've given us to use. We pray you'd give us wisdom, you'd bless it, and, Lord, just to help it to spread and to meet the needs, Lord, here in this community. It's in Jesus we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Hall, thank you for wonderful invocation this morning. And you are correct, there's a lot of needs, but it's a great community to be in. Gentlemen, the first item of approval is the approve, the Chair will entertain a motion of approval of the minutes of September 19th.
I'll move for approval.
A proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
Second.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any other discussions on the matter? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Sheriff Deloach, are you ready for your presentation? Or would you want to give it a few minutes?
We actually have a total of four awards to present today, one of which will be presented by the Sons of the American Revolution. Their representative is running just a few minutes behind, so I'll go ahead and proceed forward with the others in anticipation of his arrival. The first two awards that we'll be handing out today are lifesaving medals. So, I'd like to go ahead and call up Lieutenant Daniel Taylor and Deputy Sheriff Justin Rich. And as they come up, Colonel Wells will read the citation and give a brief synopsis of the event that led up to this.
On August 19th, 2017, a call was received by the Putnam County Sheriff's Office 911 Center regarding a two-year-old child that had drowned in a pool. Lieutenant Daniel Taylor and Deputy Rich were among the first to arrive on scene. It immediately began CPR and the use of an AED on the child. Upon their arrival, there was no pulse nor signs of life within the child. But by the time the child had arrived at the emergency room at Putnam Community Medical Center, a pulse had been regained. The child was then flown to Shands Hospital. At the time this child arrived in the Shands Hospital, the child was beginning to gain responsiveness. Lieutenant Daniel Taylor and Deputy Justin Rich.
Daniel, in recognition of your efforts in saving this child's life, there is a lifesaving medal that is to be worn on the left side of your uniform over your heart, a copy of the original recommendation for award, and a certificate of commendation. And again, Justin, there is a lifesaving medal is to be worn over your heart on the left side of your uniform immediately under your badge, a copy of the original recommendation for award, and a certificate of commendation for your efforts. Thank you.
Sheriff. Thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead. I do want to point out that unfortunately, that child did eventually succumb to his injuries. However, through their heroic efforts, these two deputies gave this child's family the ultimate gift and gave them an opportunity to say their final goodbyes to this child before he succumbed to those injuries. So, they're to be commended for that. The next award to be given out is to Deputy Thomas Jowers, and it's a lifesaving medal. Again, we'll ask Deputy Jowers to come up and ask Colonel Wells to read the recommendation.
On September 3rd, 2017, Deputy Jowers, along with other members of the Sheriff's Office, were in the area of State Road 19 and Reed Street when they heard what sounded to be a car crash. When they arrived at the area of State Road 19 and Reed, they discovered a horrendous crash where one of the vehicles was engulfed in flames. As they began to evaluate the patients in both vehicles, they realized that the vehicle engulfed in flames contained a patient that was still alive. Deputy Jowers rushed to that vehicle and was able to help that person, was able to remove that person from the burning vehicle. The subject was then transported to Shands Hospital Burn Center and has survived those injuries thanks to Deputy Jowers' timely assistance in removing him from a burning vehicle. Deputy Thomas Jowers. Deputy Rich, to join us back up front, the Commissioners would like to have a group photograph with you gentlemen.
At this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium with me the representatives here from the Sons of the American Revolution. Gentlemen.
I'm sorry, we're a little late this morning. We got held up in the traffic and the school buses and whatever. My name is William Roberts, and I'm the registrar genealogist for the St. Augustine Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. And with me is Mr. John Brown, he's our Public Service and Heroism Chairman. The Sons of the American Revolution is an organization funded in 1890 and chartered by the U.S. Congress in 1906 to perpetuate the memory of Revolutionary War patriots by promoting fellowship among their descendants. Any man who is lineal descendant of an ancestor who supported the war for American independence is eligible for membership. This includes those patriots who fought as part of militia units, who provided supplies, who served political bodies, supporting the cause, who signed oaths of support or performed similar acts. The Society proudly includes in its membership roles 16 Presidents of the United States, one British Prime Minister, and the current King of Spain. At the request of Sheriff Gator Deloach, we are here today to present the National Society Sons of the American Revolution Law Enforcement Commendation Award to Lieutenant David Atkinson for the Putnam County Sheriff's Office.
As Lieutenant Atkinson comes to the front very briefly, this account of Lieutenant Atkinson's accomplishments through his career at the Sheriff's Office could be lengthy, but we'll try to make it very brief. Briefly, Lieutenant Atkinson began his distinguished career with the Sheriff's Office in 1999. Since then, he has served in multiple positions, from Patrol Deputy, Youth Resource Deputy, Narcotics Detective, and at one point was assigned to a DEA Narcotics Task Force. He's progressed through the ranks, through the rank of Sergeant, and now to Lieutenant, where he serves as a Deputy District Commander for the Central District here around the greater Palatka area. Lieutenant Atkinson is extremely involved with the agency, and he's often thanked and receives words of appreciation from everything, from the simple, for example, we received a comment from an elderly gentleman over 100 years of age that thanked Lieutenant Atkinson for simply helping him install a sensor light in his home, to recognition that he receives for the management, preparation, and overseeing of complex tactical operations within the agency. Lieutenant Atkinson is extremely well-regarded by the younger members of the agency and is heavily involved in the training of all of our deputies from the day they joined the agency throughout their career. Lieutenant Atkinson, most of all, is a mentor to our younger deputies, and for that, we are greatly appreciative of the service he provides to our deputies, especially our younger ones who look up to him and the citizens of Putnam County. Lieutenant David Atkinson.
Commissioners, this concludes the presentation of our awards. As always, I'd like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come and publicly recognize these young men and women for their excellence in service.
Thank you, Sheriff. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Very great part of our meetings, and we look forward to them. I'm going to take a point of privilege here, gentlemen, if you don't mind, and bring up Skip Kramer with the American Red Cross and Quincy Masters, if you'll come to the diocese' plea. Good morning, Mr. Kramer.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Skip Kramer. I live in Orange Park, Florida, and I am here representing Victoria Raleigh, who is the Regional Chief Executive of the North Florida Region, that's 35 counties stretching from the Atlantic all the way over to the border with Alabama. And we, she is regressed that she could not be here this morning. She wanted to come before the Commission as quickly as possible to extend her thanks, but unfortunately, this morning, she has the contractors at her house because she was a victim of Irma, and not only Irma, but also followed by the nor'easter that recently hit and added more water into her living room through a roof. So, I am her volunteer partner. My title is as a community volunteer leader, and Quincy Masters is community volunteer leader here representing Putnam County. I've been involved with the Red Cross for 25 years. I served for 10 years as the Chief Executive Officer of the Northeast Florida Chapter. I first met Quincy 17 years ago when we began discussions to merge the Putnam and St. John's Red Cross Chapter with the Northeast Florida Chapter. We were very fortunate that Quincy then served on the combined board of the two chapters. And after I retired in 2004, he went on to receive the chapter's highest award for a board member, the Harry Kincaid Award, for his outstanding and exemplary leadership when he finally had to roll off the board because of term limits. First, I want to extend my appreciation for the partnership with Putnam County, especially your County Emergency Manager, Ryan Simpson, who did an extraordinary job, and the partner agencies and county staff that make it possible for us to complete our mission. Also, I'd like to extend at this time an opportunity for Quincy to talk a little bit about what his role has been here, and then I'm going to give you kind of a summary of Red Cross actions to date, but probably most important for you, what comes next. Quincy.
Thank you, Skip. Well, my role is to be a liaison between the elected officials of Putnam County and the American Red Cross. So, if you ever have a need for the Red Cross or a question, feel free to give me a call. Thank you. And it was nice to come out to the EOC during the hurricane and see everybody really working hard and meet a lot of people. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Quincy.
I'm going to be leaving you today, or actually with Mr. Smith, an infographic, there are enough copies here for all of the Commissioners, plus some for the public if they're interested, that has the details that I'm going to cover here very briefly for you. In Florida, the American Red Cross to date has provided over 300,000 shelter night stays. That's one individual in a cot or bed in a shelter, 300,000. And we still have 500 people spread across 17 shelters in four counties, as you can imagine, in South Florida, and that may continue for a while. Served more than a million meals and snacks, had 34,000 mental and medical health contacts, and distributed some 800,000 disaster supply items. Bringing that down to Northeast Florida, we had 10,000-plus shelter night stays, 130,000 disaster items distributed, served 118,000 meals, and made nearly 2,100 medical and mental health referrals. In Putnam County, we had with our partners six shelters initially in operation, which boiled down eventually to one. Only 11 overnight stays, but very often, for those of us who've been around a while and experienced things like wildfires, people will come to the shelter, sometimes have their meal, but they really want to be in their homes. So, that number doesn't surprise me. On the other hand, we served 5,600 meals and 3,900 snacks, and Commissioner Label reminded me to bring more Oreo cookies next time. And we had 44 medical and mental referrals here within the county. We've moved now out of the disaster relief phase to Red Cross's next phase, which is disaster recovery, where we will address the needs of individual clients for their longer-term recovery. A key part of this is what we call Direct Client Assistance, or DCA, where we can provide financial assistance to those affected by the hurricane. The parameters for qualifying for that aid and the process for applying it are being set up now, and I expect that that will roll out imminently. We do know that we will handle the cases individually, sitting down with the clients, determining what the resources they have and what Red Cross can help with. We will be working very closely with your County Emergency Manager, Ryan Simpson, as we implement our DCA program. Again, we want Victoria and the entire Red Cross Organization wants to thank the leadership here in Putnam County for their partnership in the relief phase and look forward to continued partnership as we move on into recovery. And all of this to be able to serve the clients here in Putnam County. So, again, thank you very much, and Victoria, again, extends her regrets she could not be here. If you would want a more detailed presentation, she would be happy to come down later, but it would be, I think, well after the event, and we did want to get before you as quickly as we could.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. We appreciate that. Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Just a big thank you. Shelter management is so key. You, kind of new Commissioners, probably saw that very well this time.
Well, yes, sir.
Your service is invaluable.
It only works if the community is behind us, and for that, we are very, very grateful. At this time, I'll pass this information to...
Thank you.
Mr. Masters, thank you also.
Saw you many times in EOC. Thank you very much. All right, the next item on our agenda is our public comment period. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect that the Board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We will keep score. Public comment cards are conveniently placed on the meeting room entrance and should be submitted prior to the meeting to the Deputy Clerk, who sits at the right of the podium. I would ask you to follow the Pledge of Civility, not to attack any Commissioners, and we are going to move this along because we have a 9:30 certain meeting that we're sure of we're going to be a little bit late at. So, thank you. Our first card today, I want to get these together if you don't mind. Mr. Best, if you'll come up. Now, Mr. Best, you want to talk to us today about a mental health club.
Yes, sir.
You and I have talked about that.
My name is, my name is Mrs. Zinni Best, and thank you.
Hang on a second. You and I have talked about that, and you sent me an email about that, and I referred you to our County Administrator, Mr. Sugg. Did you receive that email from me?
No, I didn't, no.
Okay, you will be, so go right ahead, sir. You have a floor.
Okay. Myself, I've been under, under mental health management for 30 years now. I was hurt, and I was in public service, and I was ran over by a tractor trailer truck. To make a long story short, Putnam County does not have basic fundamental mental health services, which is a clubhouse where people with mental illnesses can go every day. You don't have to go into the hospital, come out, and then be put back in the same environment. I did a survey about 1,000 people. Some of the stories you wouldn't believe. They go into the hospital, they come out, and they put them back in the same environment. We're in position now where we can stop this downward trend or destroying our community and equality of our lives here in Putnam County. It's a beautiful county, and we wanted to say that way. All we need is a clubhouse where you can go and all your liabilities or your expectations can be met. If you have a problem at home, if you have a problem with a child, if you have a problem with taking medication, if you have a problem with getting medication, if you have a problem with housing, we take care of all of that. So, and you have someplace to go, you're not put back out into the society that almost kills you, because you come back, or you, most of the time, you don't. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me, and hopefully, we can get this off the ground and support a great majority of the people that live in Putnam County. Thank you.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention. I have sent that email on to our County Administrator, and you will be getting it. You should already have a copy of that, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right. Next card is going to be Tim Kaiser. Timothy Kaiser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Commission, it's honored up here before you today. I'm speaking as a private citizen today, and I'm speaking about the aerial-born mosquito spraying. I want to start with stipulating and accepting that those who support the mosquito aerial spraying program are, believe they are acting for the greater good. I'm here to argue and show facts that you're not acting for the greater good, and it would do much more harm than good. And first of all, the first point I'd like to make is there's been no outbreak of mosquito-borne illnesses reported in this region or area or county. So, there's no justification for such an extreme measure as aerial spraying. In addition, many publications that you get online show that mosquito aerial spraying is the least effective method of mosquito control. It endangers public health. The particular chemical being used in the spraying on our citizens in this county is a neurotoxin that's banned in the European, by the European Union. It's also been listed by the Environmental Protection Administration as a possible human carcinogen. In addition, this chemical that's going to be sprayed is toxic to beneficial insects and birds. Now, the reproductive cycle of mosquito is very short in time, whereas the reproductive cycles of, for example, a dragonfly, it's much longer. That, that chemical kills everything. It doesn't just kill mosquitoes, it kills the dragonflies. Then you have a, you have a period of time where the mosquitoes have no predators like dragonflies to control their population. The last point I want to make is, and there are many more to make, that it contaminates our air, water, soil, and people. I last would like to make the point that this process, this aerial spraying, has not been sufficiently noticed to the public. And as a result, you, the Commission, and others have not had the opportunity to have the information they need to decide if this is the proper course of action. We've had little or no opportunity to be heard on this. If I had known about it sooner, I could have assembled a group of local citizen scientists who could have informed you and the community of the dangers of this aerial spraying, but we weren't given that opportunity. I hope we all learn from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Next person, Kathleen Story.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Story. I live in the city of Palatka. Thank you, Mr. Harvey and Mr. Suggs, for meeting with us at the last minute on Friday. I would have preferred not to speak about this here. I don't think this is the place and time. I think we should have had an emergency meeting, and we asked repeatedly for it. In every form, we knew how to do, emails, phone calls. Our group rose to 209 people who are against this nailhead spraying. I'm not against mosquito control. I know the necessity for that, but I feel like we brought out cannons for an enemy that's not there. We don't have the disease-causing mosquitoes. Sorry, I'm directing this to Mr. Harvey totally. I just think we did not get enough thought about this. I don't know if it's because the money could only be spent for nailhead spraying. I know the county's broke. I understand about, you know, needing money to do this, but I would request, to make it short, an emergency meeting, or now I guess it won't be an emergency meeting because as far as we understand from posts last night, people did get sprayed despite the wind and the rain, and you're not supposed to spray within 24 hours of a rain. I think we should discuss this. I think you should get more information about the people, the people who are against nailhead called, but that doesn't mean that there's a, you know, an enemy of us versus them, the people who want mosquito control and the people who don't, which you're maybe thinking we are. I think we should have mosquito control, but it should be the right mosquito control. I think we need better alerts for people, like there's a little boy here today who's had a chemical exposure. Those people need to know when this is going to happen, and they're having... There was so much confusion about this, we were emailing constantly and posting, trying to find out, are they spraying there? You know, did you get sprayed? Is it happening tonight? Did the beekeepers get alarmed, you know, alerted? Are they covered? You know, are the bees covered because it kills bees? We just need better communication, and I think we need... We just need better communication, and I think we need a better time to discuss it. And thanks for listening.
Thank you.
As you can tell, I don't do this.
Okay, thank you. You did fine, Miss Story, and we appreciate it. Let me say, I don't go by how they're, they kind of get mixed up when they get handed to me, so you, that's how they kind of, Miss Sherwood, you're next, please. Karen Sherwood.
Thank you for hearing me. I want to say that last night when I went to bed, I was an organic farmer. I woke up this morning, and I don't have a job anymore. My farm, there's nothing on my farm that I can sell to any customers that I have. I neither should nor would sell to any customers I have. I'm now unemployed. I have, I'm widow, and I have a daughter that's applying to college. And I'm extremely upset about this, and I would have felt, at least felt some sense of civic duty if we had had some sort of, you know, dire health emergency. I would have understood that. But I feel like this was for nothing. And I also realized last night that so many of the other people that were opposed to this around the county didn't have an extreme mosquito condition. Like, I thought that, you know, maybe I was just the only one that didn't have a bunch of crazy mosquitoes. I only had them at dusk and dawn, and I'm like, I've had mosquitoes much worse than that before. And I just felt like, you know, first of all, we weren't having crazy mosquitoes, apparently, throughout, over much of the county, and, and now I've lost my business, my income, and my livelihood of 18 years. So, I just wanted to make you aware of the, those consequences. There's many more, there's many health consequences. There's, you know, all kinds of devastating things that other people can bring up because I'm well aware of them, but just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Sherwood. Elizabeth Bacon Smith.
Elizabeth Bacon Smith, 203 Morrison Road, Interlocken. So, Nature's Nor'easter was a friend of Putnam County this weekend. I heard planes going back and forth last night, which means our Putnam County commissioners were not Putnam County's friend. Whose friend were you? Who's running the planes? Whose planes are they? There's no excuse for aerial spraying with Nalaid without having a special meeting called to discuss safe alternatives. You have known since September 18th that this spraying was planned. Larry Harvey, you knew as of Friday afternoon that you had the power to call a special emergency meeting.
I can do personal attacks, and that is not true.
I beg to differ, but John Spells and the Reverend begged for years to get the ditches near them addressed regarding mosquito dangers. Nothing was done for years, if at all. I've been absent from meetings, so something may have been done now. Any danger to bees and butterflies is a danger to all of us, and Nalaid is.
Thank you, Miss. Nora Blunt.
My name is Nora Blunt. I live on West Harbor Drive. I've heard time and again about people, you know, and issues that's going on with the county. People get discouraged because they feel like that y'all are going to, go ahead and do what you want to do anyway, and you're going to ignore the public.
Miss Blunt, I apologize, but I can't hear you.
Couple of weeks ago, I came down, I came down to the county commissioner office in person because I wanted to give my kudos for Mister Bob out at mosquito control office. He helped me with my mosquito problem last year. Very knowledgeable person, and he explained to me about the mosquitoes and how they, they lived and so forth. I have a fish pond. I lost a lot of fish. Four of them were carp that we had to have permits for, and he was explaining to me that the tablets were safe to use in fish ponds. In other words, this was a safer means to control mosquitoes. One tablet for a hundred feet, I felt like, was very, very wise to, to use. And I knew that county commissioners here, some were new and might not have met Mister Bob because he was going back out on retirement. So, I took my time. I thought I did my civic duty to come down here and explain this situation to Mister Goddard and you, Mister Harvey, and I feel like I've, I've been seriously let down. Thursday, I spoke with Mister Chip Liebel. He said he needed to have a hard document in front of him where this spray had hurt anybody. And then you heard the outcry from the community. We wanted an emergency meeting. We needed to have that dialogue with you. I have a daughter that's going to have a baby in the next two weeks. This spray doesn't leave her body. It could cross the placenta barrier. We have got issues like this that we have to look at, and time enough is hard enough when you have a hurricane ermine and all the devastation that's left. It might not have left me a lot, but by George, I care about my fellow citizens. And I feel like you have seriously left us down, and I, I, I think you still need to have an emergency meeting. We need to know the after effects of this and how it's going to be cleaned up, how our funds are going to be set aside for these young, young children that may have ADHD because of it, and what furthermore, we're going to do in the future. Well, how can we go on as a community and say, we're going to do better next time? We're going to use the pellets that are safe for our fish. This, this nailhead can, it can get rid of 22 of the 27 endangered species. We are entrusted a lot. The agriculture department, the health department, environmental protection, they are all putting this on your shoulders, all of you, on your shoulders. It's a lot of responsibility, and we have to be better informed in this. And if we have got citizens out here saying, here, I've got this information for you, don't disregard us.
Thank you, Miss Blunt. Appreciate it. Laura McGibbin.
My name is Laura McGibbin. To our county commissioners and citizens, I'm deeply concerned with the county's decision to move forward with a mosquito control application of the chemical Nalaid via aerial spray. I'm on the no-spray list for mosquito control and do not consent to Nalaid. I have voiced my concern to mosquito control, as well as many other departments, and encourage you to check the number of calls and emails you received in opposition of this decision. Strong opposition has also been expressed on social media by 200, well, it's two, I wrote 208 here, but it's now 209 Putnam County residents that oppose the spraying of Nalaid. Clay County rejected using this very same chemical due to public outcry. Had we known further in advance, citizens could have had a chance to express our unified opposition in greater numbers. The use of Nalaid is banned in the European Union. It's a neurotoxin that can have adverse health effects on human and animal life. This chemical has been proven to kill bee populations and fish. Beekeepers had little time to protect their hives with last-minute notification. Our ability to grow food in this county is dependent on pollinators. Because I believe we should address the mosquito issue before it gets worse, I fully, I fully support the regular use of BTI via trucks in the areas that have reported the worst mosquito problem. This method would be much less harmful overall. Considering we have no reported mosquito-worn illnesses at this time, a chemical of this toxicity is not warranted. With fall weather approaching and as the floodwaters have adequate time to dry out, the mosquito population should be naturally declining. I sincerely hope you take the time to consider a safer alternative for our county, Putnam County already ranks very low in public health. It would be unfortunate if our citizens' health was impacted or our food supply affected by bees dying from Nalaid. I'm concerned for the most vulnerable, such as children and expectant mothers. I'm also very concerned with the short notice that was given to the public. The notice of spraying was announced on the day of, Monday, October 7th, 2nd, after regular business hours on Facebook by the Putnam County Emergency Management. Not all residents use social media. Those who were unaware of the last-minute decision to spray on Monday, October 2nd may have been out during the time of spraying and may have been exposed during the early morning hours following on Tuesday, October 3rd. Inevitably, bees, other insects, animals, humans, fish, and our environment could be negatively impacted. Spraying Nalaid along the St. John's River and other waterways could contaminate the water. We have flooding in many places in the county, and the Nalaid label indicates not to spray near bodies of water. In Putnam County, our natural resources are an asset and deserve protection. Many people from around the county are reporting that the mosquito problem hasn't been that bad and is tolerable at this time. The weather in which the aerial spray was chosen to be done Monday, October 2nd was rainy and windy. These conditions were not favorable for spraying Nalaid because it can drift and contaminate waterways that could potentially kill fish populations. Also, areas that were not on the map may experience exposure to Nalaid from the wind that was blowing from the east. The label indicates it shouldn't be sprayed in winds over 10 miles per hour or 24 hours after sustained rainfall. From my understanding, if the chemical Nalaid is applied during rainfall, it can take longer to dissipate than dryer conditions. The county's mosquito control department should be focusing their efforts on the places they're reporting the worst problems or the mosquito populations that are the largest instead of treating vast areas with Nalaid. Going forward, direct treatment of the worst areas with BTI, which targets larvae, would be more effective than treating the adult mosquitoes with Nalaid. If a lack of funding in our county mosquito control department is what primarily motivated the decision to move forward with applying Nalaid, then the funding for that department may need to be reviewed, so in the future, we may better, we may be better prepared. I've been disappointed that our request for an emergency meeting last week on Friday, September 29th, was not granted. The citizens deserve to be heard before the decision was made to go through with the spraying of Nalaid. We need accountability on the part of the Board of County Commissioners in order to hear the legitimate concerns of the local citizens rather than blinding, blindly accepting funding from the state. As concerned citizens, we understand that it is the county commissioners that ultimately decide whether or not aerial spraying of Nalaid is continued. Should the board decide that Putnam County doesn't want it, Nalaid, and chooses to research safer alternatives, then they must notify the county administrator and Representative Bobby Payne, as well as the Department of Agriculture.
Miss McGibbin, we need to wrap this up.
Last paragraph, sir. For now, please stop or postpone future aerial spraying of Nalaid until further, further consideration and research is done towards finding safer alternatives. Going forward, we need measures in place that allow citizens to weigh in on parts of the state funding that our county accepts during times of state of emergency following hurricanes. When these state-provided services directly impact the lives of citizens and our irreplaceable environment and ecosystem, we deserve a chance to be involved and a means to express our concerns in an open dialogue prior to the decision being made. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm also including copies of scientific references of this chemical, as well as a copy of my letter.
If you'll give that to Tony, our clerk.
Thank you for your time.
Record. Thank you very much. Marlene Atkins, Marlene Atkins and Weston Poole.
I'm Marlene Atkins. I live off of Coral Farms Road in Flora Home. This is Weston Poole. He will be four, he will be three in December. He was exposed to poisons in utero. He didn't get to make choices whether he was exposed or not. He was born at 25 weeks gestation, one pound, nine ounces. He was, again, exposed to, chronic exposure to poisons unknown to us, and I found him without a pulse, not breathing, in August of 2015. I performed CPR. I, vitals came back. He, again, lost consciousness, stopped breathing, and lost a pulse again. I performed CPR until his vitals came back. It happened a third time. I did this until EMS showed up and took over. He was taken to Putnam Community Medical Center. He was then lifelighted to Shands. I am fortunate that I have this blessing, and this is my gold medal. This is my gold medal right here, and I'm fortunate to have him. He didn't choose this exposure. He didn't choose the exposure last night. We don't know all the facts because we are not getting full disclosure. We are not getting information in a timely manner. That's where I began this journey. And then, upon some research, phone calls to offices, being told they are not in the office today, emails, phone calls, no one returning my calls, and then another day, they're not in the office today. Well, that's not so-and-so's job. I will not name names. You need to, I need to refer you to this office. Well, that is not our job. We cannot call an emergency meeting. We don't have that power. You need to call so-and-so. Well, we can't stop the aerial spraying. So-and-so has to contact the Department of Agriculture. What I found is people hiding under desks, behind doors, when they actually were in office, we confirmed that, and people saying, that's not my job. Well, I want to know what your jobs are. What did you do yesterday? Aside from this meeting, what will you be doing today? What will you be doing tomorrow? What are our tax dollars going for? I didn't want the spraying. I didn't have a choice. I didn't know. I would like more educa, I would like everyone to be more educated on this particular poison that we were gassed with. And all I ask is if you all don't step up, that you step out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last public card is Willie Deluson.
I'm Willie Deluson, 129 East Calpin Lake Point Road, Hawthorne. As a citizen of Putnam County, I'm very upset that we've been exposed to the nailhead spraying without any notice. It seems that if the county had, hadn't had the state assistance to do it, y'all probably wouldn't have chosen to do it, and probably would have had citizens' input beforehand. And I'm very upset. I know many friends, neighbors, I haven't talked to anybody that's in favor of it or was in favor of it. I don't know if it's going to happen again or not, hopefully not. It's very scary, as you've heard, what it does to people's livelihoods, their families, their future children. You know, the wildlife just could be extremely detrimental. I talked to somebody from the emergency services department yesterday, and he assured me there'd be something on the website, the county website, that would state whether or not they were going to spray last night. I checked multiple times. I checked after the spraying had happened. We didn't know until we heard planes coming over that it was even going to happen. They said it might happen, but we'll put notice on the website. There was nothing. I feel like as citizens, we haven't been heard, we're not cared about, we're, what are, I mean, are we citizens if we don't have a voice? Yeah, there's, as you've heard, there could be many alternatives. We could have delayed it to have citizen input. Many people sent emails to the county commission, and they were bounced back, emails that supposedly are valid emails to the commissioners. So, as a citizen, I'm very upset. I, I know many, many people that are extremely upset that aren't here this morning, that couldn't make it. So, again, I just ask you to, to remember who you represent. The citizens of Putnam County are supposed to protect our livelihoods, our health, so please do so.
Thank you. Okay, last card, Janet Smith.
I apologize for my rubber boots, but this is how I live these days because we are once again flooded. The flood that we had in Willacca did indeed go away for about two days, and we have it back. And when I compared pictures, it is very similar to what we had about one week out of the hurricane. So, whatever is being sprayed, there are some conditions. Because you guys did not call that emergency meeting, and because you did not get out into the community and talk to the very people who are living this, there are things that you don't know, you should have known before letting this go on. Specifically, in my neighborhood, on my one street, all of the houses were flooded to the extent that the air conditioning ducts were absolutely flooded. What happened is when the water went down, there were quite a few people who removed those. Now then, now that we've got this spraying, this is going underneath our houses into the air conditioning ducts, and one of the worst places to get exposure to this is by what you're breathing. If you had called an emergency meeting, you would have known about this. Further, there are elderly people in my very neighborhood because this alert system We did not know when, or if, or for sure, or what area. I have people in the neighborhood, and for a while, it was me, so I know, I lived this. Because they don't have air conditioning, they are sleeping with their windows open. Now, last Friday night, I was asleep, and I was awakened by a plane that went over. And we had heard that maybe it was going to be sprayed, but we didn't know that for sure. And I cannot, I cannot tell you the pit I had in my stomach because my neighbors, I knew, had their windows open trying to sleep. Now, when you don't alert people like that, you have effectively endangered the public. You can't say it any other way. The failure to call an emergency meeting and the failure of your alert system has endangered people when it didn't need to. This needs to change. It's time for this county to quit reacting and be proactive. You had the power in your hand. There is that ordinance. You all know it, and we all know it. You could have called the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. That's the end of our blue cards. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Please come up, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Roxanna Regan Ruiz-Palatka. I just want to briefly state that this whole handling of the impending hurricane was a failure from the get-go. There were issues. I, I want to note that Mr. Suggs and Mr. Manning went out at midnight, Sunday night, at the height of the storm, to rescue the frail elderly residents in the nursing home that had flooded. What the county failed to do, there was a state of emergency declared Wednesday prior to the storm on Sunday. The county should, I mean, it just made common sense to me, as they did in St. Augustine. My mother is 94 years old, is in a home because she requires around-the-clock care. They evacuated them on Friday. It would have made common sense to me that the county officials and leaders and responsible emergency management people would have gone to nursing homes, assisted living facilities, anytime after Wednesday declaring a state of emergency, questioned their evacuation policies, made sure they had generators, proper fuel, things like that. None of that happened. There was also a failure to notify the public. They came out and said that there would be 60 mile-per-hour-plus winds expected, but they failed to say that after 40 miles an hour, there would be no response by emergency staff, that they would be called in off the roads and the bridges closed at 40 miles an hour. The lack of enough shelters was another issue. The fact of jamming all the people that were pet owners with sex offenders way out at the west end of the county was another issue, although the private property owners at this call center, after that shelter filled up, which kept people from going, the pet owners from going to be, even though they were in a different building, they were on the same campus. And this was just, you know, from the get-go. This issue of this nalid spraying, I obtained the document dated September 18th that showed in that document, the spraying was going to occur on the 28th. Everybody says they didn't find out until last Tuesday, but I still didn't see you making a public notice being in the paper until Thursday morning, when it was supposed to originally occur Thursday night. I found a, well, actually, a friend of mine tipped me off that it was posted Wednesday evening on the emergency management page of Facebook. That is not something that majority of these residents view, is emergency management page on Facebook.
Ms. Weeks, we need to wrap up.
Yeah. I made public notice on my pages of this issue coming up. People got involved. We notified you by email. We wanted an emergency meeting. It was canceled throughout the weekend because of plane issues and then weather, and you still refused to hold the emergency meeting. I even sent an email to everyone stating, any of you, because there's declared state of emergency, had the authority to call an emergency meeting, and there was no response to that whatsoever. As everyone has clearly stated to you, this is upsetting, setting, there were dangers. I feel it was just a simple matter of the, the mosquito control department is, was over budget. So, they weren't out spraying as they should have been.
Ms. Weeks, we really need to wrap up.
You've got enough mosquitoes in your nightly traps to get the state to pay for it. You failed to notice us, and we're just really sick of, that's how the way this county is run, and you're ignoring public concern. It is not hysterical social media. It is not, we have, we had a right to have a discussion about this, and you just totally ran and blew us off. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Okay, that's the end of our public comments section. We're going to close that section of our meeting.
Quick question. Will there be spraying tonight? Can we find out right now if there will be spraying tonight in the neighborhood of our homes?
The spraying is over in Putnam County. Okay. All right, we're going to move to our consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to pull? I'm sorry, I closed that section off.
Yes, I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're done. We're going to be, we're going to move it on. Okay? Consent agenda. Commissioners, any items you wish to pull? Commissioner Lible has none. Commissioner Goddard?
None.
Okay.
I'd like to pull J.
Okay. Commissioner Turner would like to pull J.
I just have a quick question for Brian Hammond on it.
Okay.
I'd like to pull E.
Okay. And I was going to pull E also. So, let's go in order. Commissioner Pickens, item E, page 20.
I just wanted to have Press come up and just explain the, the whole scenario of Holloway Road and, and why such an expense for such a short piece of pavement, I guess.
Yeah, that was my question too, Mr. Tompkins, so.
Good morning, Press Tompkins, Public Works Director. We have been working on Holloway Road for quite a while with the DOT. This is actually DOT Scott Grant. And what we had to do, this is a little bit more than our normal residential-type road. We knew this had heavy truck traffic going, and so it was designed for truck traffic. We have three inches of asphalt, eight inches of base, and 12 inches of stabilization under that, so it is a very hefty road. That's why the price tag reflects that. The other consideration is from 100 to the bridge is approximately a little over half a mile, but it has 56 feet of elevation drop. So, due to that, with the engineering firm, it was determined that we will use concrete ditch paving to control the erosion of the road, and that, that added to the cost also. So, these were the factors that went into the design of this road to handle the excessive truck traffic on it and the elevation drop on it and the erosion potential. And as you can see from these last three storms we've had, we've had tremendous road washouts due to elevation changes and amount of water that we expect on these Holloway Road, the northern end of it was actually rebuilt again. When we went out there after the storm, we had stumps that were left from the 50s when it was originally built, sticking five feet out of the ground. So, that's, that's what we were facing, so we were trying to avoid some of those situations when we paved this road to have the type of road we needed for the type of traffic that was going to be on it. That was the cost. It did come in under the DOT budget. DOT approved the plans. DOT has also approved the award of the contract. So, we've done everything transparent with the DOT. Got all their approvals, everything, and the last approval is the Board approving the contract for the contractor on it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tompkins, before you leave, I have a couple. My concern was the price tag too, but what did we start off on this road? Was it $1.5 million for this road on us, on the grant, or?
I believe.
We spent a lot of money in engineering so far.
We did. I think that was somewhere around.
Two point?
1.2.
1.2 million?
1.2. I was going to say, I thought it was about 1.2.
Okay. All right. And is the state aware and signed off on the reduction of the mileage from 100?
Yesterday, yes, we have. We've, we've done all that through the state, and they've approved everything that we've done so far.
Okay. Is there any, on the last page of our packet on here, I saw where Ms. Evans said that there was $925,114.48 left without any outstanding invoices. Do we have any outstanding invoices? Because that would leave us a balance of about $169,000.
We have not invoiced anything on the construction yet, so that $900,000 would cover the construction cost of it. We've spent money out of that 1.2 million having the design done.
Right, but, but the low bid was 757,689.61.
Right.
So, that leaves a 169, 169,000. Is that for cost overruns? Are we going to try to go any further, or?
If we can go further, we can, but we always try to leave a little buffer in there in case we do run into some unexpected situations. But we've already talked to the state, and if we can extend it another 300 or 400 feet, whatever, but we will try to expend all the DOT monies. The road in its entirety was already designed and approved by DOT. We're only building a portion of it, so if we have any monies left over, we can certainly extend it to expend those monies.
I think that's important to repeat, if you don't mind, that you, the original design, you designed the entire road from 100 to Tinsley.
That is correct.
Okay? So, as funding comes available in the future, you won't need to spend any more money on design at that point.
That is correct, and DOT has approved the plans in their entirety also. So, as additional DOT monies become available, we could then go right into construction phase.
I did learn last week that when the new commissioners came on board and we went to Tallahassee, one of the issues we had in our small county coalition, as well as our rural caucus and FIA, and Florida Association of Counties, was the third-party engineer taking money, basically overseeing these smaller projects. But I did find out last week that the state still requires them if they touch state roads. So, I guess this one still requires that because we're touching State Road 100.
We are actually, we have certified to do the CEI work in-house.
Okay.
And so, we, we do that work in-house.
So, we can avoid that? Because some counties, it, it takes a big chunk out of their allotment.
It does. It's, it's a 10 or 15% of the construction cost for CEI, but we have an engineer in staff that's certified for it, and we do our own in-house inspections.
Commissioner Turner, you have some questions, sir?
Yes, I'm going to look at it from a little different angle if I could, Mr. Chairman. Press, do you think by your budget figures and your knowledge of the cost of asphalt and the materials that's going to be used on this project, that Smith Civil Group could actually do this job for $757,000? I mean, seriously, they're 108,000 lower than the, than the second bidder and 160,000 lower than the third bidder. So, I realize we have performance bonds and what have you, but that gets real messy when we have to try to start getting them. So, in your professional opinion, do you think that this firm can do that job for $757,000?
Yes, sir, I do. We did talk to them. They have a good track record with us and other counties. I've dealt with them several times. Their Beschen Smith came from the Old Jack's 18 Company. Eddie Smith actually sold it to his daughter. So, they've been in business over 20-some years. I don't have any problem with them completing the work for the bid that they, they bid on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Tompkins, one last thing I forgot to ask. One thing that concerned me on the, the approval right here of, of the award is that we don't have any dates on our contract of start and finish dates. Can we start seeing some of that come through when we do these awards?
We know as soon as you sign the contract, we give them notice to proceed, and they have 10 days after signing of the contract to get started, and that's, that starts all our construction dates. So, once you approve the contract, we put those dates in it.
Okay. All right. I'd just kind of like to know them upfront if I could.
We can, we can give them to you in the future upfront, but that's normally what we wait, just like the circumstance, when a commission meeting gets postponed, then we'd have to go change all the documents. So, soon as you sign the contract and the notice proceed, they have 10 days from the signing of the contract to get mobilized.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tompkins. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to pull D. I forgot, I wanted to comment on that.
All right. So, let's go back to item D then.
It is quick.
Page 18 of your packet.
Yeah. Give you a minute to get it up.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank Tax Collector Myers, certifying the tax roll this year, but more, I want to thank her. What it doesn't reflect is the additional fees on our businesses for the tax receipt. We will not do that, and I thank you for that. And anyhow, anything we can do for our business community is appreciated.
That's right.
I thank you.
And not only was it a good thing for our business community, it was, we were spending more money collecting it than we were, so it was, it was a cost savings too.
Yeah, let's bring her up.
Yeah, please, Ms. Myers, come up and, and tell us that good news. And Commissioner Lible, thank you.
Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity. I actually was here for D in case there were questions on the new commissioners of what it means to extend the tax roll. But J, Commissioner Lible and I were talking about J in the sense that you will not be adjusting BTR fees because BTRs have gone away in Putnam County. The opportunity to say that now is important because we have businesses in our community that have not, do not know that yet, and they have BTRs on their walls as prescribed that say expired September 30th, 2017. So, we've been getting calls, people saying, "Hey, I haven't got my renewal." And our good answer to them is your Board of County Commissioners has eliminated that fee. But I, to have the opportunity to speak today for our, your listening audience to be aware, if they're concerned they didn't get the renewal, it is because that ordinance was repealed. So, accolades to everybody on that decision.
And I'm sorry for the mix-up.
No, you're fine.
That's all right. Now, again, I brought a copy of the letter just in case any of you have questions on roll extension, but if not, I am glad to sit down.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Turner, item J. You wanted to pull that, page 97 in your packet.
Yes, I just had a quick question for Brian.
Mr. Hammond, if you'll come forward, please. And let me tell you, as he's on his way, Mr. Suggs, thank you for getting your department heads here this morning. It's very nice to see them all over there, and we have a question, we can ask them directly.
Sir.
Just a quick question, Mr. Hammond. This is the same one we worked on in workshop, the one that we, last week, so the, what we have in front of us today, the, the small $30 raises or whatever, that's what we looked at last week?
Uh, no. No, sir. You will look at the fee schedules this evening at 5:05.
No, the fee schedules is.
Is it on this morning?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, it is.
They're asking to be approved right now.
I apologize. Yes, sir.
I'm just asking, is this the one we looked at in workshop last week?
It is. There have been no changes. There have been no changes. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, sir, for getting that straight.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible and a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, J? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. We will stand recessed for five minutes.
Before you go, Mr. Chairman, when we come back, I'd like to ask our EOC for just kind of a, a quick, Anthony or Quinn, I know you guys worked hard on this, but if you could just share with the public our response and why we do things the way we did as far as the mosquito spraying when we come back.
Okay. Mr. Smith, is that okay?
Yes, I just had a comment before you took a break.
Sure, please do, sir.
Because I'm not sure if the department heads are staying, but this really was a request that I needed to pass to Commissioner Turner about Fullwood Road in East Palatka. I just happened to see some citizens this morning, and they asked me if I would please put that name on the roads to be looked at for some serious drainage issues from this past weekend's rain event.
Thank you. And we have a transportation meeting. All right, we're going to stand recessed for five minutes. All right, we're going to reconvene our Board of County Commission meeting Tuesday, October 3rd. We have a 9:30 certain Public Works public hearing. It is 10:16. This is pro- This is proposed resolution vacating drainage and utility easements and portions of Beecher Point Drive. This is page one forty-three of your packet. Mr. Cuneo, I see you're all geared up and ready to go.
Yes, sir. Can you pull the PowerPoint up, please? Good afternoon, Commissioners, or good morning Commissioners. You've seen this before. This is the public hearing process for vacating a portion of Beechers Point Road. James Cuneo from Public Works. You have seen this in August at the transportation meeting. Just give you a heads up. There's some of the things we're gonna go over today as far as your table of contents. Beechers Point Road, it's about eight tenths of a miles long, serves about a hundred residents. Ends down to like an apartment complex or some type of community down there that.
Condo development.
Condos, that's what it is. Thank you for the correction. Road width's about twenty-five. The right-of-way width is fifty feet. And this came from Mr. Charlie Hiller, a requester who owns some property. This is his package that he provided us. Initially, we would, I'm gonna go through some maps and stuff here for you to see it. But Public Works' position is to vacate the drainage ditch only that's on his property. All right, this is an initial map of Beechers Point. You see how the road comes down and it comes into a cul-de-sac. And I have another map on here that will show you what he actually formally requested. Initially, he wants to request cutting off that cul-de-sac. He wants to vacate the utility easement and then where the orange line runs from left to right on your page there, it, there's a drainage easement there. Here's the aerial map. Shows a condo complex down there in the cul-de-sac. This is his original request to vacate. So this is what he's asking to vacate. He's asking us to vacate a portion of the cul-de-sac, the ten-foot utility easement that rolls around the cul-de-sac, and then the drainage easement that goes out to the St. John's River that's running from bottom to top of your page. Here's the platted subdivision that actually shows the cul-de-sac in there along the river. And a few ma, or a few pictures. This is showing his property. He actually owns the two lots in there and this drainage easement splits his lot. Fence line here. The road actually comes down and there, at this point, there is not a physical cul-de-sac there that's constructed. However, we feel that if by doing that, we're, we're causing restrictions if we vacate the entire package as he's requesting. Here's where it shows down the road coming into the condos. And you see his fence line right here is actually somewhere right around the edge of the cul-de-sac that was initially planned for that plat. Some pictures on the other side. This is a section map, the tax map. So he owns the two parcels there that are highlighted in yellow. All right. And Public Works' position on it is we, we request to, we would like to vacate the drainage easement only. It's from my understanding that he desires to put these two lots together to build a home on the property. So there is no physical swell or ditch going through there. It's just a paper version of a drainage easement. We feel that we can't really vacate the cul-de-sac nor the utility easement that runs around the cul-de-sac. Because if we desire to make that a cul-de-sac in the future, EMS has to have the ability to turn around. From what I understand legally, there can't go on private property to turn around. So this cul-de-sac, you know, could be developed in the future. We don't necessarily wanna vacate the utility easement because if we need to have utilities in there, we have nowhere to move it. And I'd have to go back to him and ask him for a utility easement if we vacated this portion of the property. All right. That concludes my presentation. I'm not sure if he's here.
Mr. Cuneo?
Yes, sir.
Before we do that, I would like to ask the board, do you have any questions for Mr. Cuneo?
I do. Lot twenty-five on your diagram where you have your lots lined out?
Yes, sir.
All right. That appears to be a short lot. And of course, the eastern corner of the proposed cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac is the utility easement you're concerned with, right?
Uh, yes, sir. If you see on this map right here, this is his original request. You can actually see where the utility easement rolls around.
Well, who is in, you can see what he's trying to square his lot off.
Yes, sir.
Have we checked into lot twenty-five to see the ownership status there? You see, that's a very short lot. You could actually move your cul-de-sac over on the twenty-five and let this person realize what he's trying to achieve. You follow what I'm saying?
Page one fifty-seven.
I'm sure y'all visited it.
Yes, sir, we did. And I'm trying to see where twenty-five is.
It's directly across.
Directly across?
Yeah. It's your easterly.
I'm.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Commissioner, if I could jump in?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Manning.
Down here. The, the cul-de-sac is where it is because that's how it was plotted by the developer. And it's not plotted any further into lot twenty-five than what's shown here. So the board wouldn't have any authority to, to move that if that's what your question is.
That's not what I'm asking, but if the owner, it was, I don't know what the architectural lineup, layout that he has for those two lots when he puts them together. But if it's crucial that he have that extra room, I, I bet you twenty-five is unbuildable lot is all I'm trying to bring up here. Did you explore that?
Yes, sir, we did. And there's actually, I believe, some pictures in here that show a portion of that. So you, if you look at this picture here to the left of the screen, is, would actually be part of what you're talking about, lot twenty-five.
There you go. Okay. I just wanted to bring it up. It was very obvious to me when I saw this, that what everybody was trying to do.
Along those same lines.
Mr. Manning, I thought you might cut a check for that lot there, but.
I don't know. How low is it?
Along those same lines that Commissioner Lible asked, if we were to try to square up that lot, would there still be enough turning radius, radius using what currently has on lot twenty-five now?
No, sir, cause it, right now, that pavement's only about twenty, twenty-five feet wide. I mean, if, if you got a actual fire engine, one of the big trucks down there, they would have a hard time turning around there anyway as it is. And if we decide to develop, develop that a little bit further, if we did go to lot twenty-five, then we would have to consider, you know, would we have to purchase it? Do we wanna go that far? So it's, we kind of, we kind of feel like it's better to leave it as is.
My other question is the drainage easement that you are okay with. Based on this current hurricane and the, the northeastern and all the rain we've had, have we looked at that drainage easement to see if it's still, I mean, it might be a very viable point down there?
Well, I, I'd kinda like to let Mr. Hiller answer that question, cause to be honest with you, I don't know. I know they probably had flooding down an area, but I don't know if, what his property did, so.
Mr. Lible?
As I read through the, the packet, the, every one of your lot lines going up to the point that actually has a drainage, drainage easement. So there's multiples along that riverfront right there, so. There should be concern about it going down the road, which we just experienced a lot through these storms. It can do the same thing, especially on asphalt and making a washout at the end. I'm sure you guys explored every bit of that.
Okay. Commissioner?
I just wanna help the guy. I mean, this is a waterfront property. Pay a lot of tax? Come on.
Well, is there any other comments from Commissioners?
Yeah, press, from what I understand, it's just be the, the drainage vacation or the drainage easement and it's not gonna affect that cul-de-sac or turnaround. It's not gonna affect the entrance and the exit of the condominium.
Won't affect the condominiums at all. And, and Commissioners are right. We have a drainage easement on either side of the two lots. By us vacating this center easement, it allows them to build, have those two lots as one buildable lot so he can build his house on it. That's one of the reasons why we, we didn't have an objection to, to getting rid of that drainage easement because we have one on either side of the properties as it is now.
Is the applicant here in the room?
Mr. Chairman, if I may just, real quick.
You may, sir.
Before we start looking at possibility of changing the radius of the cul-de-sac there for emergency services vehicle, let's be very mindful of the fact that we have other vehicles that utilize that road once a week and that's our solid waste folks. And we don't want, we wanna make sure that they have enough radio to turn their vehicles around so that we're not causing property damage, you know, due to a decision that we may make here today to, to limit that turnaround.
Good point, Mr. Minister. Thank you. Okay, the applicant here? All right, sir, if you'd like to come up and state your case, please. Give your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you. I'm Charlie Hillier. My address is thirteen oh six Marley Road in St. John's, Florida. First of all, I wanna thank them for the opportunity to, to vacate the middle easement. And I believe the history of that development is that the condo association some years ago owned lots, my two lots, twenty twenty-three, and then the lots to the right of me where there's a home built, they owned twenty and twenty-one. Which the history showed that those people had to acquire that from the condominium association. And across the street, when you were mentioning lot twenty-five, it is actually boat storage for the condo association. So they own those two lots. And I think they were probably gonna develop that because the cul-de-sac indicated that these little easement areas along there would have been underground drainage, storm drains. And there probably would have been a storm drain come out of a curb at the street. I do a little real estate, so I'm kinda watching that as a possibility that may have happened back in the history. But history has shown that they never used those lots and therefore they were sold to us, to the public. Next door, my neighbor has a, a normal setback from the original street, which I, which this cul-de-sac creates a hardship for my setback because I've got a setback from this map that was shown. And when the river setback brings me back a little tighter from the river, I have a very, very small building pad to work with. So starting off, that creates hardship for us. The subdivision was, been of record and has been developed for more than thirty years. And during this entire time, no use has ever been made of the easement in question for either drainage or utilities, nor will such ever be made or needed. Utilities servicing said subdivision are located on the easterly ten foot of the subdivision of said cul-de-sac sought to be vacated. The portion of the cul-de-sac in question has never been paved and has never been used in more than thirty years since the subdivision has been developed. There is more than sufficient width available on the road without the cul-de-sac portion in question for any type of vehicle to get in and out of the subdivision. I submit to you that one of those pictures shows a little island at the end of the, at the beginning of the, of the condo association that has a little roundabout around it. And for thirty years, big trucks have been able to get in and out of there.
Would you bring that microphone to your mouth?
Okay, sure.
We're having a hard time hearing it. Bring it right up to you. You gotta speak right.
I'm hearing myself real good.
Yeah, okay. You were talking about the roundabout that shows.
There's a roundabout just to the south of where this cul-de-sac was to be developed. And trucks have been coming in and out of there in that condo association for many, many years without any difficulty. So now the county wants to bring a thirty-year road design into modern standards and create a hardship for me to construct a home with new setbacks. The utility companies, I have letters from all four utility companies saying that they have no plans to utilize that proposed easement because they are already in the standard easement from Beechers Point Road. There it, if you were gonna use that, you would have to obliterate a huge backflow preventer that is part of the water system that is in the original ten-foot easement from the pavement. So it doesn't make sense. You'd have to move a fairly large utility point for the water system if you were gonna drive over that because it's in the original ten-foot easement. There's a picture of it. It doesn't quite show there, but the engineers know what I'm saying.
Mr. Hilliard, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you just made a statement that kinda perplexed me. You said the county now wants to bring a hardship to you. I don't see it that way because the lot lines were there when you bought it. You already admitted you dabbled in real estate. So we didn't do this. Those lot lines were already there. We're not bringing a hardship to you. We're trying to help you on a hardship that you want to have, not the county did to you. Is that correct?
Okay. I accept that. I have a fence there that I guess the question would be, do I have to remove it? It's been there for probably longer than the plat was there, but there is a fence there. And do I have to remove it?
We can't make that determination without a right-of-way agent at this meeting.
Well, I, I need some, the setback lines, I need variance or something to that effect because the, the building pad that I have has to be pushed back further because of the hardship that that thing causes. Just wanted some consideration there.
We're gonna talk to the building department in just a second. But right now, we're in a public hearing, so you've made your case. And I will ask if there's any other public wishing to speak in favor of this application. Anybody here in the audience wanna speak in favor? Anybody wanna speak opposed to this? Okay. I do have a question then. Can I get the building department, Mr. Hammond?
While he's walking up, I have a question.
Mr. Hilliard? Please come, Mr. Turner has a question for you?
Have you researched, have you, no, this is for you, Mr. Hilliard.
Okay.
Have you researched your setback along the front yet? What is your required setback in that area?
I don't have it written down, but I believe it's twenty-five feet. And then from the river is fifty.
Right.
So.
Seventy-five feet is pretty much gone already.
Yeah.
How deep is your lot?
A hundred and twenty from the original fence line that I have on my old survey. So the cul-de-sac would go inside of that fence line.
On that one lot. That's correct.
If they were to develop it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Hammond, you've heard the applicant's concern. Is there any relief that can be done for him?
He needs to make a request to the zoning board of adjustment for variance. His setback, and again, I'm, I don't recall the zoning district that he's in, but it'll either be thirty-five or twenty-five. From the water, it could be as low as twenty-five. It just depends.
Okay.
Again, he needs to come, come by and see us on that one.
Okay. So that's where he finds relief, is at the zoning board of adjustments?
Yes, sir.
In your department. Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Hilliard, did you understand that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioners, is there any other questions for Mr. Hilliard or anybody?
Yeah, I have for press. Press, you may not remember this, but Pam Smith, who manages the condos, I put you in touch with her. Do you remember her conversation and her concerns? Were they maybe willing to look at, you know, the property that they own?
When I talked to her, what, the vacation really did not have any effect on the condo association. It didn't affect their access and it didn't affect any of their properties. And she seemed to be pleased with the discussion we had with it.
Is she willing? Well, I guess I can't say, ask if she's willing. She's not here. But I, I really like Commissioner Lible's idea of using part of that lot twenty-five if they're not using that. And if, if and true, they're not using it, it's just boat storage, then maybe we can accomplish this by, by some agreement there for ingress or egress, whatever the case may be. I mean, we can certainly look at that. I mean, in all reality, we'd have to purchase additional properties. And I don't know if it would, since it is platted property, Mr. Manning, would that have to be a replat to, to acquire part of lot twenty-five to make it a cul-de-sac? Would those, would that be replatted?
It would.
Okay, so it's.
Mr. Chairman, is Beecher Point Road owned by the county?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, so that cul-de-sac is owned by the county?
Yes, sir, it is. All right. All right. Is there no further questions? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'm not sure. Mr. Manning, what was your comment on your last comment as far as the cul-de-sac went and the plotted lots, like lot twenty-five? What would it take to go revisit that?
It, it would have to be replanted by the owners of, of whatever portion is look, you're looking at to have replanted. So it would be the owner of those lots. The county as the owner of the road, as I understand it, county is the owner of that road.
They would all have to join in an application to replant those properties in order to, to move that, the location of, of the road.
Okay, that's what I thought. So there's no advantage for the condominium to make these changes or go through that process?
If they're not, if they're not owners, which it sounds like they're not, they have their own access at the end there. I don't know that they would have much involvement other than they may have an interest that I haven't heard here today.
Mr. Manning, I have a question. To accomplish this, if we were to square off the property as Mr. Hilliard has suggested to us, could, and this is just my thought, could we have an, could Mr. Hilliard give us an easement over that again? But by moving the lot line would allow for the squaring up of the property and reduction in setback is my point. So.
I think the setbacks are from the easement. It wouldn't matter if the easement was given via the plat or via the property owner, if I understand your question right.
I'm talking moving the lot lines back up into the cul-de-sac.
Right.
That would allow for the squaring up and the additional land, okay? And if we could get an easement back, but use that new lot line as a setback. I hope I'm making myself.
I don't think that would work because the setback is from the easement location of the right-of-way.
Not from the lot line itself.
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I, I think that the setback would start at the utility easement. And while we can vacate, unless I'm missing something here, it seems like we can vacate the drainage easement because we own it. But we don't own the utility easement, I don't think. And so that would be platted in with the original subdivision plat. So with that being said, I don't think squaring it off is going to help the man at all because he's still going to have to, to miss the utility easement that's still going to be in the same place even if we square it off. So, and I think that, I mean, I'd really like to help him. I truly would, but he's still going to have that ten-foot easement that's a utility easement that he's going to have to deal with that we can't do anything about. So I think that, that his best shot at getting this to be a more of a buildable lot than what it is right now would be to go to the ZBOA and try to ask for a variance to, to, to make his setbacks less. I don't know that he can, I don't know that ZBOA has the authority to give him a lesser setback on the riverside. That might be a, a DEP thing or something. I'm not sure. But front side, they ought to have the authority to, to look at giving him a setback, smaller setback. And I think it's probably a pretty good chance that he could get that done, especially if they're not using that.
If I can clarify, as to the utility easement, if that was also dedicated to the county, and it looks like I'm getting a nod from Mr. Tompkins that it was, that is the county's utility easement, and it is not, looking at the documents here, it is not currently being utilized. So the county, you know, would have authority to, to vacate that portion if it was this board's desire to do so.
So it wasn't dedicated to a utility. It was dedicated to the county's best y'all can tell?
That is correct. It was dedicated to the county for utility purposes.
Mr. Chairman?
Changes it.
Mr. Lible?
With that being said, and these being the two last lots on the line, what would be the need for utilities in the future?
I can't really, I mean, if the utility company, if we, you know, run water, sewer, or electric cable TV or whatever needed an easement, that's what they were put there for. Now, if the facility's already in, you know, if Mr. Hilliard bills there and they want to come in and run the cable TV or electric to them, they'd want to go underground. They'd want to go in that easement.
But they would have no need to go beyond this lot, would they?
No, beyond those lots, no, and that's.
Because the condominium has its own utility easement.
That's correct.
I don't know why we can't do it.
I know, I'm trying.
I really don't, Mr. Tompkins, unless you could tell me differently. I mean, it looks workable. Or James?
The thing is, if we vacate the portion of the property in the cul-de-sac, then we can't provide the needed emergency turnaround that we need to provide for it. Because the condominiums are private property. And, you know, we really don't have the right access to that for turnarounds, everything else. Why the cul-de-sac wasn't built in the first place, I don't know, but that's one of the things we're looking at to get that corrected now because we do own the property to be able to build that prescribed turnaround.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
You may, Mr. Turner.
I don't know if this should be to you or it should be to Brian, but doesn't our subdivision ordinance say that dead-end roads have to have a cul-de-sac on the end of them as part of our subdivision ordinance?
Yes, sir, it does.
So if that's the case, if we, if we take away this cul-de-sac, then we're, 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 I mean, the ramifications from it could be bad later on because with all the, of all the people we've paid put cul-de-sacs on the end of their roads in subdivisions. So I don't, I don't really see how we could grant this when it would be a direct violation of, of the basic subdivision ordinance that we have in the county.
But Commissioner Turner, we're only clipping ten feet of it.
Okay, well, I'm not saying that.
He won't have the turnaround room. I'm making a joke.
Where's the line drawn? It's either against the subdivision ordinance or it isn't.
You bring up a good point. You really do. And the Press's turnaround statement. I'm just trying to find a solution for this man because, I mean, if he's successful, we're successful.
I could too. I truly do.
Well, I think his relief comes from the zoning board of adjustments. That would give, that could potentially give you some setback.
Yeah.
Relief there, and then that would, even though your property might not be square, you might be able to do exactly what you want.
And our actions today would be right on target. That would be in addition to what we do today, so.
And if I may add, that, one of the issues that the zoning board of adjustment would always look at would be a hardship issue. And part of his argument for a hardship would be that the increased setbacks are causing him a problem. And he could make an argument on that basis.
Would the ZBOA understand that it came out of the commissioners and we wrestle with the fact that it is a hardship, or would they not know that?
Perhaps.
Thank you.
Commissioner, the applicant's got a question, if that's all right.
Hilliard, please come up one more time. Come up here and speak in the microphone. That's okay.
Could we bring the map up again, this plat?
Your original or the plat?
The, the old plat.
Okay, I see it.
That one. The one that, that was highlighted in yellow?
For that one.
Okay. There is a hard line that is a semicircle that would be the edge of a pavement for a cul-de-sac. I, I understand that. Behind that is a ten-foot easement for utilities, maintenance and utilities. I have letters from FPNL. I have letters from Comcast. I have letters from the water department. I have letters from the sewer department who said they have no plans to ever go into that area because their lines are already in. So I would respectfully request that at least the ten-foot easement be vacated because it will never be used. The hard line, which gives you the right to go in and pave it, I guess I would, you know, at this point, I can't object to it if that's a subdivision requirement.
Mr. Tompkins, and, and listening to Mr. Hilliard right now, are we turning around trucks on the ten-foot utility easement now? Or is that grass and not?
That's a grassed area outside. It's, is adjacent to the right-of-way. So it's a grassed area.
So we could get rid of the ten-foot utility easement and still keep the turning radius of the trucks in the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, the, the turning radius will be within the cul-de-sac area that we own. Now, in light of, I guess, the letters from the utility companies, I meant, I guess we could go ahead and vacate that ten-foot utility easement adjacent to the right-of-way if that would help the situation.
The setbacks have to be from the edge of the easement, correct?
That would be from the actual right-of-way line, the hard line.
But we would need probably some documentation on file that, from utilities.
Yes, sir.
We, I have four letters in the file, which is what they asked for, for me to submit.
All right. Mr. Manning, how do you feel about that?
Well, I would ask, does our land development code, in addition to requiring the, the cul-de-sac also require a, a utility easement around that road, our cul-de-sac?
Mr. Hammond?
It doesn't, our land development code does not require an easement along all four property lines. No, it does not.
Okay.
It's simply a matter of when they're plating it as far as what they intend, but I don't recall anything along those lines.
Okay, so the relief we could do today is to vacate the ten-foot utility easement without jeopardizing the cul-de-sac, and more relief might, could be possible through the ZBOA. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, and the five-foot easement between the lots, twenty-two and twenty-three.
Right, right, right. The drainage easement and the utility easement, correct. Thank you, Mr. Lible.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Where are you going to bring power into this property from?
Power's overhead right now.
I understand. From what direction?
Mr. Hilliard, you've got to use the microphone.
From what direction?
The power is overhead right now. At, at the front of my lot, the power goes underground to the condo association. So there's a, there's a point where the power is on the pole in the original ten feet. And the water, the backflow preventer is in that original ten feet, the grassed area, just off the pavement. So if you were to utilize that, if you were to pave that cul-de-sac, you'd have to move all those utilities that are in that original ten feet. Or you'd be driving over, you'd be driving over the water and the sewer and everything else.
Yeah, I'm got confused. Mr. Manning?
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing the utilities are in the easement.
They are in the original easement, not this cul-de-sac easement that we're talking about. They're in the original ten-foot easement that is, uh, ten feet from the original pavement that you saw in that picture right there.
Mr. Tompkins?
Okay, I'm not seeing that easement on any of the maps we were showing.
What, what he's referring to is the grassed area from the edge of pavement to the right-of-way line. It's not an easement.
I'm sorry. It's the right-of-way. I misspoke.
Utilities were put in the right-of-way rather than put in the easement.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that's the, the problem we have. They should have been put in that easement in the very beginning, but I guess it was just a straight shot across, and they went across within our right-of-way, which is normal. I mean, a lot of subdivisions road, we have water and sewer and utility poles right at the edge of our right-of-way. So it's not in an easement. It's actually in the right-of-way that the county owns. They did not put utilities in the ten-foot additional easement that was shown on the plat.
So from my mind, we got power and water coming up. The lot goes like this, but the power and water keeps going straight.
That's correct.
I got it.
And, and there are, Mr. Tompkins?
Right-of-way. It's in the county, it's in the county right-of-way.
Gotcha.
Mr. Tompkins, have you verified that, that all of the utility providers have expressed no objection to vacation of the utility easement? We, we have those letters. He asked to provide those letters for us in the copy of the package. So Mr. Johnson should have those letters. But you also do, or you will? Yes, sir. Guess that's my question. I need to know that, that you've verified that, that? Yes, sir. We can double-check it.
I have the letters with me.
He's got the letters.
I can, I can disperse them.
Well, I think the thing is, they need to be the proper letters, and we can let public work.
And, and the way it works is, we, basically what we do is we send an email to all of my utility contacts, and they provide us an email response. In his case, I believe he did the same thing. He emailed them, sent them this request and said, I'm wanting to vacate this. And they've come back and given him a, we don't have any issue with it, response via email. That's how we normally do it. That's for every package.
And we're going to verify those responses?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm a little confused now. Okay, so what we're, what we're going to do is leave the ten-foot. What we're discussing is possibly leaving the ten-foot up to the cul-de-sac, but then doing away with the ten-foot utility easement around the cul-de-sac in front of his lot that they're not using anyhow, and doing away with the draining, the drainage easement in between the two lots to make his place whole where he can build. Is that what we're talking about now?
Number one, and number two.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Make it as whole as we possibly can, yes.
Press, I'm just concerned that the conversation that I believe you had with Ms. Pam Smith, who, you know, manages the condos, is not here to listen because I'm pretty sure what you said was going to be proposed. Now, granted, we do have the ability to change it, which it looks like we may do. It had the, it didn't have the vacation of, of that easement in there. So I'm just wondering if she would like an opinion or have a voice on, on that.
I honestly, I don't believe that utility easement has any effect whatsoever on the condominium association. Like you said, the utility companies went down the county right-of-way to provide the service to the condominium association. So it's, it's protected within county right-of-way. I, I really don't see any conflict with what we're doing with the condominium association.
Okay. That's the end of our public comments. Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lible?
Read it perbatim. After careful consideration, the public, no, we, I, I move that we approve the vacation of easement number one and easement number two and not number three.
And that the resolution be revised accordingly?
Well, no, it only included number one. I'm adding number two.
Right.
Yep.
Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Okay.
Hey, we have a proper motion.
I said move. I moved.
He did. He moved. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion on this item? See, Tony, let's do a roll call vote, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
I'm looking. Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The resolution that was provided in our packet today, does this have to be modified now, or is this to be, okay?
It will.
Thank you.
It does. Thank you. All right, now we're going to take some time, and we're going to discuss mosquito control real quick. And I do want to set the record straight from the public comment. That Commissioner Lible was also in there at the nursing home fighting for residents' lives. I understand it gets kind of drawn out, but at this time, let's get the record straight. Mr. Gass, I'm going to ask you. You're our, you're our county expert on mosquito control. Mr. Romei, Chief Romei, would you like to come up with him too? And Director Simpson, would you like to come up? And Mr. Flato, would you like to come up? Okay. Let's get this out, okay? And I'd like to go back. I think it's, it's important for us to go back to step one. And step one was the EOC requested a lot of items from the state of Florida on a certain date. And our county manager at the time signed off on those, which was fine. That's his legal right to do that. And one of them was mosquito spraying. Now, I want to ask a question. There is no box to check on what product you want to use, is there? Okay, all right, so.
No, it goes to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Service. FDEX is the division of the state that basically gives the state registration for pesticides and oversees the licensing of pesticide applicators. So they are the sole responsibility of that. They are also the organization that is over mosquito control for public health purposes. They provide the public health licensing for the people in the state of Florida for mosquito control. They are the entity that decides everything. Dibrom, which I prefer to use dibrom because that's a generic chemical name for it. Nailid is a brand name, which is like endorsing a, a product. But dibrom is a product that has been in use for many, many years. I personally have been involved in using it for thirty-eight years.
There's two popular ones from the research I did, dibron and nailid, right?
Dibrom is nailid.
Same thing, same product.
It's the exact same thing. Nailid is the, the brand. Nalid is the, the brand name that, like, if you were buying Roundup.
Right.
And glyphosate, which is the active ingredient in Roundup, is what the dibrom is. To, to try not to endorse anything, I try not to use the, the nalid.
But they're both organophosphates, but they're different.
They are both the same chemical. They are organophosphates, which everybody who has an issue with that, yes, organophosphates are neurotoxins. That is why about fifteen to eighteen years ago, the EPA looked at what the exposure that everybody in the country was getting. At that time, people were using diazepam in your house when you called a pest control company, or you went and bought it off the shelf and used it.
No, it was durzban.
They were using durzban in the yards.
Malathilon.
And all of these things, and they did what they called a cup analysis. They took a cup and they said, "Okay, if I take the organophosphate, which is a nerve poison, diazepam fills the cup up so far, then durzban fills it up a little bit more, then dibrom would fill it up a little bit more and maybe it would overflow. Maybe there's too many out there that we're exposing the public to." So at that time, they started to modify the registrations for organophosphates for use in and around homes, which is the most exposure that people would come in contact with. So diazepam disappeared from the shelves for homeowners to use. Durzban disappeared from the shelves from homeowners to use. Right now, that dropped all those organophosphates back basically to the agricultural industries and mosquito control industries. The reason dibrom is used for mosquito control for aerial application is because it is the most effective product out there. It kills more adult mosquitoes than anything else. It was actually used in the daytime in Miami for the Zika outbreak, with people walking around in South Beach, people in, um, all three areas in Miami that had the outbreak because it was the most effective product at killing. Most mosquito control products that are safer are synthetic pyrethroid-based products for killing adult mosquitoes. The problem with those is, right now, uh, some areas, you're kicking up to fifty percent resistance in the products because they're based on the natural chemistry of pesticides derived from chrysanthemums. And they are easily, insects easily become resistant to those types of products. If you look with the old pyrethrin-based flea shampoos, and I've told people this for twenty-five years, when you wash your dog with it and dry it, take the fleas, lay 'em on a white paper towel, come back in twenty, thirty minutes, and if the fleas are no longer there, you've got resistant fleas and that product's not killing anything. So you can spray your yard as much as you want, you can treat your dog as much as you want, and it's not gonna kill the first flea. So that's kind of why nalid or di, uh, dibrom became a very popular product for use because there's only one other organophosphate that can be used for mosquito control, and that is durzban. Durzban is registered, but nalid has been, nalid or dibrom has been used for so long that it is an industry standard. It's almost like they can apply that by habit because it is constantly used. They know how far the droplets are gonna go. One of the other things that everybody needs to remember, this is not an agricultural spraying. You're going out, you know, a lot of people think this is somebody spraying a potato crop and you're putting as much down on the ground as you can. Their objective with this is to have droplets suspend in the air and mosquitoes to fly into those droplets to kill them. It's not making a ground application. It is a, it is geared towards hitting the mosquitoes. The bo, the moths might get hit because moths fly at night. Butterflies, which are the pollinators, generally are not affected because they are resting and they are not flying at night. Bees generally are not affected because they are resting and not flying at night. One of the, to my detriment with that kind of spraying and with any kind of mosquito spraying is, the only thing that really gets bothered is lightning bugs. Lightning bugs are, they're, they're hit because they're out flying at the same time the mosquitoes are flying. Uh, your dragonflies, your damsel flies, all those types of things are not flying at night. That's why the applications are made at night while the mosquitoes are active. Unless it is a Zika case, then those mosquitoes are active during the day. And...
But the same concept, they're flying into the chemical.
They're flying into the chemical. It's, you know, you, you can do what's called a barrier treatment, but a barrier treatment, you would have to spray everybody's property and then you gotta wait for the mosquito and he bites you, eats you, everything else, to finally go land during the day to go to sleep before it'll kill the mosquito. So by providing that type of action, the state provided a service that we needed. People say there was no disease active. That's true. We had no reported cases of any diseases, but St. Louis encephalitis, Eastern Equine encephalitis, West Nile encephalitis are all present in the bird population at all times. There is a small percentage of birds that are going to be there that have those diseases. If you increase the mosquito population, then the mosquitoes have a greater tendency or ability to transmit that disease from one bird to another. Now, instead of two, you've got four, now eight, now sixteen. And you've got an explosion of disease going through the bird population. And then when that happens, you increase the risk of a mosquito biting an infected bird and then biting a person. It's a proactive measure to stop disease before it can occur.
It's not reactive, it's proactive.
It's proactive.
Thank you, Mr. Laubel.
Gass, you explained to me the difference. What we often refer to, or some of the concerned citizens referred to these products as being banned in Europe or any elsewhere, but you had an explanation for that.
Correct, I, I can, I could ask everybody here. Is chloridone banned in the United States?
No.
Chloridone is not banned, everybody thinks it is. Chloridone was not registered. They decided not to apply for re-registration of the product because the cost of doing that was more than they were selling. From what, uh, the manufacturer of dibrom says, they chose not to supply the information for re-registration in Europe. So their registration expired and they were given until 2012 to remove, to have all their products sold, or then they would have to take 'em back. So that's basically what the company says occurred.
Thank you.
Chief Romey?
I have a question for Larry, uh, Mr. Gass. On the, you said the particles stay suspended in the air to, uh, to address that lady's concern about her organic crops, where are we with that?
She probably has no detectable limits on her organic crops. Uh, there's been numerous areas where, um, swab samples have been taken after aerial applications and they can't find detectable limits that would indicate anything that would violate organic production.
I, I guess, can somebody get her that information? I guess evidently she's unaware of that.
From, from her statements that she said, she said she would not sell the products because of this. And it's, it's, it's something that organic farmers have, um, an ideal and a standard that they try to live by. And, you know, because this happened, it may, she may feel ethically bound that, uh, it would not be in her best interest. But I can, I, most of the people who did talk, I have talked to this week, I have talked to last week, on numerous occasions and, um, explained everything that I could. But this is like arguing religion or politics. People are set in their ways. And no matter what facts you give or what facts they give, it, it's hard to dissuade anybody. Uh, the only thing that I did ask each of them to do is not go to the nospray.org website, which is an anti-pesticide website, and physically go to the EPA and the Center for Disease Control and look at their websites, look at their research, look at the amount of data that has been provided for the registrations of these products. And I even mentioned to some of the people that rats are one of the most disease-carrying animals in the world. And warfarin is the chemical, the active ingredient that's put in rat poison that causes the rats to basically bleed to death. That same product is taken by thousands and thousands of people every day. It's called Coumadin for people with heart disease. They are provided the same thing that is a poison to rats to save the lives of humans that are directly ingested. That's what people don't understand is a lot of pesticides and pharmaceuticals are discovered side by side. They go through pretty much the same rigorous testing, everything else that pharmaceuticals do to a point.
It's all about the application, isn't it?
That's, the application is the key.
Mr. Turner?
Well, this is very interesting. Can we get it back on point of our mosquito spraying and move on with that?
Let me ask one question, Mr. Gass.
Please do.
So what would happen to our population in Florida if we were to remove mosquito spraying and air conditioning?
I think we would go back to about the nineteen twenties. We would have a mass exodus, and that has always been, you know.
Thank you.
That's been my understanding.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, not to belabor the point, but Mr. Gass made an interesting comment and it's just something I wanted to follow up with Mr. Gass on real quick and see if it might be of interest. Uh, you said that there's, there are tests that can be conducted, swab tests, that can be conducted to, uh, you know, to see what the, uh, the amount of material might be detectable.
Correct.
Does the county have the ability?
The county does not have the ability and those would probably have to be set up within probably twelve hours of an application because of the rate at which dibrom degrades. It degrades very rapidly. It does, it's not a very persistent product.
Thank you.
Last night, we had rain shortly after the planes went over. So it wasn't, I, I would say shortly, probably an hour afterward that we had rain, so. But the idea is for that stuff to float through and the mosquitoes to get to it.
Yep, that's, that's the idea.
Chief Romey, anything you'd like to add to the discussion, please? And we're gonna move this along.
Uh, just real quickly, the EOC is meant for everybody to come together to help work on an issue or multiple issues. You know, we've been doing this for a very, very long time and I can tell you, there's certain things. Every time there's a hurricane and we get rain, we have debris, we have road issues, we have mosquitoes, things like that. So each department takes on different components of whatever, you know, so we can get things done pretty quickly. Uh, and that's why, you know, we got involved with mosquito control because making that request to the state is simply a request. There's, the State Department of Ag does not do any kind of, uh, treatment for just a nuisance mosquito. There has to be a sufficient number of trap data, you know, on and on and on, for them to even check the box of, "Yes, we're gonna spray." And they do pre-trap data, they do post, uh, spray data. I went out last night to the airport where they were and I, you know, have to say, it was a very, um, expert, uh, crew that was there. There was two planes, there was over six individuals, they had everything set up. But more importantly, there was two state officials there, environmental specialists, watching everything they did, every time they flew, every time they, uh, opened the container, they were there the entire time. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions, but...
Thank you, and, and let me say this, trying to gather information is difficult at best when we're on the internet and my lord, there are a lot of different sites. And I didn't know nalid from dibron and, I mean...
Nor did I, sir.
You know, I, it's amazing what, what we're supposed to know, but we can't know everything. We can only know what we know. And we rely upon you to make those decisions that are best for our citizens and, and I appreciate that. Commissioner Laubel?
Mr. Romey, in the future, uh, when there's a potential spraying period, that we would be following protocol, which I think you've done perfectly this time. Can we better inform our citizens in more of a PSA? I know some of the measures you did were, were beyond, especially with the beekeeping community. Many things that were mentioned here this morning were done with reverse nine-one-one. Talk about some of those measures and what we can do to better satisfy their request of being informed with the public.
Every time we have an issue, whether it's this or any, you know, well-water intrusion, we, we do a myriad of things, not only just putting it on Facebook, uh, Twitter, all of the social media stuff, it goes on our website, it gets to every media outlet uh, that's out there, from the TV folks to the paper print folks to the radio folks. I know, uh, Paul, myself and several of us went to the radio station. Paul's been on the radio since well before, every morning, you know, going on, they were actually broadcasting from the EOC during the storm and thanks to what Paul was doing. So I think everything, you know, we know how to do was utilized. You know, there's, if people don't turn on the TV or, you know, that kind of thing, you know, I don't know of another way, except sending a mailer and then when you're in a situation like this, you know, it may or may not get to them, type thing. I'm open for any suggestion, certainly.
Do you think we could go earlier, maybe a week earlier? Or what could be anticipated? I mean, we might not do it at all, it's a state call.
We certainly could, uh, you know, at, at your request, if we have a situation again, as soon as we make the request to the state that, you know, we send stuff out. But we've only been sprayed one other time and just of note, the same company that did last night also did that in 2011 or 2012 because the gentleman from Louisiana was the manager then. Uh, but, and they used the same component. But, um, you know, we certainly could do it then, but we never know if we're actually gonna get approved or not. And then, once we get approved, it's totally up to the state, it's out of our hands on, it's based on their schedule, when the planes are available or, you know, whatever makes them available, they're out.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
So weren't we just approved on Tuesday afternoon? Yes, sir. And so then it went into the paper Wednesday morning and they were supposed to spray Wednesday evening, Thursday? Thursday, Thursday, which would've been four years. We only had one day's notice. Correct. Pretty much. And so the re, the reason it didn't happen until last night was because of weather, but even then, we didn't know that it wasn't gonna happen each night until they called it that evening. Correct. So it's not like we could, that we knew that it was gonna be put off until last, until Monday night, until mon, uh, until Sunday evening, when they said, "I'm sorry, we're not gonna do it till tomorrow, the weather's too bad." Actually, the crews were here, I think they got here either Saturday or Sunday and they were ready to spray, but the weather, you know, they were in place and ready to go, but they just had those other situations come up. My point was, is a lot of the people that were upset, we didn't call a, that we didn't call a meeting, the, the emergency meeting, if it had happened like it was supposed to happen, the meeting would, would be, it'd been done before the meeting ever got called. And so we didn't call a meeting, well, it got put off. Well, it's supposed to happen that night. So if we had a meeting the next day, it got, it got put off again. But if we had a meeting about something that's already happened, it's not as important, I don't think, as if it had a, if it had a...
But if we had a meeting about something that's already happened, it's not as important, I don't think, as if it had a, if it hadn't already happened. So we just had no way of knowing it was gonna be put off every day until it got down to the, to that point.
Correct, and if I may just add one note, we're not the only county that asked for it. There's over twenty counties, I think it's twenty-three or twenty-four, as, as I checked yesterday, that have asked for it. All, you know, everybody's in the queue to get sprayed or, you know, go through that process. They just have to have the trap data to justify the, you know, the, the spray, if you will. So including Orange County also, although something, I mean, there's a whole list of them. And Saint Johns County asked for help from the state, but they got their airplane back up, so they are using their, their own internal spraying from what I understand.
And let me piggyback on, sorry, Commissioner Turner.
Point you shared with me, I asked what product Saint Johns County uses in Volusia, our coastal counties. And all of it uses the same nailing product, and it has, on a weekly basis.
Saint John shared with me Sunday, when I called them, that they've been using it for over fifteen years, the exact same.
And let's just play the tape back a little bit and go with Commissioner Turner here. We had a workshop last Tuesday, and one of the items was mosquito control. Had we known Monday we would approve for it, we would have discussed aerial spraying at mosquito control workshop. We didn't know until six o'clock that evening, so it wasn't an item on the agenda other than we taught mosquito control. And had we known, we would have taught more in depth at that point, and that's all. So we're, you know, it is what it is, and we're moving forward, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, Mr. Suggs.
Just, just as a point of information clarification to what, a lot about what's being discussed here is the timeline. You know, I had a conference call yesterday with some folks from the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services regarding the spraying last night. The information that I was presented is from the EM Constellation, which is where requests are made during the storm event itself. The, the paperwork that, that I have shows that the request went in on September twentieth. And you are absolutely correct, and so are, so are staff, that the actual task wasn't assigned until the twenty-sixth of September, okay? And that notification wasn't even updated until after two o'clock that afternoon. So in a perfect world, every, you know, we would have known these things, but we know that, we were notified Tuesday afternoon of a potential spraying on Thursday, okay? The weather is what presented the delays in the, the application. But in my conversation with, with the gentleman from the Department of Agriculture and Community Serv, or Consumer Services, you know, I asked him the very specific questions about nailing, and if this was the only application available, and the answer was yes. And the reason why is it was the most effective. I was also told that they'd already sprayed two point five million acres in the state of Florida this year with the same product. So it's used all over the state. And, and again, you know, social media and the news, radio station, everybody had been notified on a daily basis as best we could of the delays in the actual application because of the weather. I don't know what else we could have done as far as notification, but just for a point of clarification, we've heard that there's been some discussion about when we were notified, the actual request didn't even go in until the twentieth, and the notification was on the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. All right, I think we've pretty much accomplished this. Any other comments? Thank you very much, gentlemen, we appreciate all your hard work on this. Okay.
Chairman Harvey?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna have to excuse myself, I have a speaking engagement.
Okay.
That's committed to.
All right.
But we're at the point of the agenda where we have appointments, and I have none, sir.
Okay, sir, thank you. Commissioner Labble? Commissioner Goddard, any appointments for you?
No.
Commissioner Turner, any appointments for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I have two appointments for the District Three Fair Authority seats. The first one, which would be the full term, would be Cassie Nettles.
Okay, Cassie Nettles.
Next one for the remainder of the seat that someone has resigned from until the June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, April Singleton.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
I've turned in their address and email address and phone number to Tabitha for her records.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Any other appointments? Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I would like to nominate for the Animal Services Advisory Committee, Ms. Jenny Oakwood.
Jenny Oakwood?
Yes, she's a kennel owner in South Putnam and member of the South Putnam Animal Network, and an advocate for, for animals in the county.
Okay, do you have any other appointments you'd like to make?
Yes, I do, on the Fishing Fund Advisory Committee, I'd like to nominate Mr. Robbie Shoal to serve on that committee.
All right. Is there any other appointments? I have none. So we will appoint, since Animal Service Advisory, Jenny Oakwood, Fair Authority, Casey Nettles, April Singleton, Fishing Fund Advisory Committee, Robbie Shoal.
Cassie Nettles.
Cassie, I'm sorry, okay, all right. We need that in the form of a motion, so the chair will accept a motion.
So moved.
We have proper motion by Commissioner Turner to accept the four appointments.
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose like sign the ayes habit. Item number eight, County Administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item for, for consideration today, and that's the discussion on the boating restricted area ordinance. It's the temporary no wake ordinance for the Saint Johns River. At the last Tuesday's workshop, it was discussed. Since the meeting, we have had, asked to have this item placed on the, on the agenda today to, to further discuss the, the ability to draft and enforce an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. Mr. Manning?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we did have that discussion at the workshop. And since that time, I, I have had an opportunity to go back and, and look specifically at the, not only the Florida statutes, but the Florida state regulations on the, on the issue of the no wake zone in Dunn's Creek as it relates to the issue in general, in general, as well as our current ordinance. And I'd like to go here, take a minute to, to provide you with the information that I found. Generally speaking, the Saint Johns River is under the jurisdiction of local, state, and federal laws. According to Florida law, the county may adopt an ordinance related to the Saint Johns River, including its tributaries, establishing a slow speed, minimum wake, or numerical speed limit boating restricted area if the area is, among other factors not applicable to the flooding situation, subject to hazardous water levels or currents. The current adopted county ordinance, which is, which is limited to those times that the Saint Johns River level is eleven and a half feet or higher, as indicated by the Dunn's Creek Gauge, operated or reported by the U.S. Geological Society Survey's National Weather Information System, has not taken effect and cannot take effect until the Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission has reviewed the ordinance and determined, and this is important, by substantial competent evidence, that the ordinance is necessary to protect public safety. And that's the issue we discussed a little bit last week. The state regulations further provide that any such ordinance, based upon public safety due to hazardous water levels, will only be approved based upon credible data that demonstrates that the area is subject to water levels or currents that, and this is important as well, endanger vessels operating the, in the area or the occupants of such vessels. The state regulations provide further that no ordinance establishing a boating restricted area will be approved by the protection, for the protection of shoreline, shore-based structures, or upland property from vessel wake or shoreline wash. That is language taken specifically from the regulations. Additional language includes, vessel wake and shoreline wash resulting from a reasonable and prudent operation of a vessel shall, absent negligence, not constitute damage or endangerment to property. The wake resulting from the reasonable and prudent operation of a vessel is a force which should be anticipated by the owners of property adjacent to navigable waters of this state. And again, that is language specifically in the state regulations, verbatim. Also, since the Saint Johns River is a navigable water of the United States, such boating restricted areas are to be developed in consultation with the U.S. Coast Guard and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. Finally, the county may only place signs within the waters of the state in conformity with the United States AIDS-to-Navigation System maintained by the United States Coast Guard, which the county must apply for and receive a permit to place. Thus, it appears that in order to be able to enact an enforceable no wake zone in this area would be for the legislature to make changes to state statutes and regulations according to the way that they're currently written. With all of that said, there is an option for the provision of relief to residents living in any area along the Saint Johns River and its tributaries that is subject to flooding. Florida Statute Section three twenty-seven point three-three provides it is unlawful to operate a vessel in a reckless manner. Reckless manner is a manner in which, which is in wilfer or wanton disregard for the safety of persons or property at a speed or in a manner as to endanger or likely endanger life or limb, or damage the property of, or injure any person. Any person operating a vessel upon the waters of the state shall operate the vessel in a reasonable and prudent manner, having regard for all attendant circumstances, so as not to endanger the life, limb, or property of any person. However, the creation of a wake and resulting shoreline damage must be based upon negligence. Vessel wake and shoreline wash resulting from the reasonable and prudent operation of a vessel shall, absent negligence, not constitute damage or endangerment of property. Therefore, the sheriff may enforce the statute as he deems prudent based upon the conditions of, of operate, persons operating those vessels. So with that said, what I'm asking of you all today is, given the, what I've just, the information I provided you, is if you would like for me to, to still go ahead and revise our ordinance to, to address safety, which is not something that's currently in there, I can go ahead and do that. I don't advise you that we do that. I believe it will continue to be unenforceable, given the current laws. If you want me to continue to do that, I certainly will, but I would ask that there be a motion and a roll call vote, giving me that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, for your comments on that. I'll go ahead and speak first, if you don't mind. I think the board was very clear the other day that we want something to happen for our citizens of Putnam County. If, if we have to lobby our state legislators to change the statute, then I think that's the heavy lift that we need to do. The areas we're talking about are areas where the governor has toured and saw the devastation effects of high water, and truly, the, the high water and septic tanks don't mix. And that is a public safety problem, in my opinion. But I think the county needs to take a very good stand about how we feel about our citizens and how we can protect them. And if we need to go up to Tallahassee and say, we can't get these two, our ordinance done because they don't meet the requirements, then we need to put pressure on our legislators to change the Florida statutes to make that happen.
Agreed.
That's how I feel. Commissioners?
As I understand it, we could put signage out, but we can't enforce it.
No, not in the river, not without getting a permit and approval.
Have to have the.
Mr. Turner?
Are you done, Commissioner?
I am done.
Again, I'd like to take this from a little different angle, I think. I'm offended that this commission, in our workshop, asked for an ordinance to be drafted by consensus. And nobody today shows up with, except something that says why we can't do it. I don't think that's the way that business needs to be done within our county. I mean, if there was an issue between Mr. Manning and what the board's consensus was, I wish Mr. Manning had actually said that he had that concern, and instead of not doing what we directly asked him to do, or I thought we did, maybe I'm mistaken. I think that, I think that we need to, to, to do something for the citizens in these areas that are having their places destroyed. I realize the, the difficulty that we're coming, that we're facing trying to get this done and do it, and done in a, in a manner that, that will help and will hold up. But even if we go out and try to do something, if the sheriff finds that he can't write tickets, he can at least slow them down by going in his boat and stopping them if they're blowing through there at a time of high water. I've been out and looked at a few of these places, I mean, it's, it's just disheartening that the water is a, a foot below these people's floors, and then somebody comes down Dunn's Creek and, and floors it, and all of a sudden, the waves come in, and that's what's, what's tearing their houses up. If somebody would just temporarily go through there in a, in a safe, slow manner with some, just a little bit of respect for the people that live there, there wouldn't be the issues. And I, I think we've got to try to do something. If we, if we put out a sign and it's wrong, then okay, we'll deal with the sign, please. If we, but we, I feel like we've got to try to do something, I truly do, for these people.
Mr. Manning?
Commissioner Goddard, you have the floor?
Yes, we can't even put up a sign that says, please do not create a wake. I mean, that's not an ordinance, that's not, we're not, can't arrest anybody over it, but.
Not legally.
Just to make them aware.
Not according to state statute and regulations, not legally. You also have a potential liability for placing a sign in a navigable waterway that, that is not, that does not fall within the guidelines of the regulations. And if I could address Commissioner Turner's dissatisfaction, I did not feel that I had consensus at a workshop. And with something as important as, as bringing you an ordinance, which in my legal opinion is an illegal ordinance, I certainly want to know on the record that a majority of commissioners want me to move in that direction.
Well, I think going forward, I think going forward with our county administrator here, the commissioners will be going, you'll be determining the consensus, and you'll be giving your staff the guidelines about what to go on. Is that correct, Mr. Suggs?
If that is the wish of the commission, absolutely. We will, when we have these type of discussions, if it is at a workshop and there's a consensus, I will, I will at that point in time identify the consensus and we'll move forward.
Thank you.
I just wanna add that I agree with Chairman Harvey and Commissioner Turner, everybody. I believe we need to, you know, put, start something in motion, you know, so we can help these people in situations like this. This is the first time I've ever brought my iPad into a meeting, but I had some information on it that I wanted to have, and I got an email at eight fifty-five this morning, there is flooding in Sportsman Harbor and Wallaca. We need a temporary wake zone from the boats. So anyway, it, it is a serious issue, and, and it doesn't look like the water's gonna go down for.
Oh, no doubt, and I'm not disagreeing. I'm just here to tell you what the current status of the law is. I agree, I think there needs to be some lobbying efforts to change that. People are in need of, of, I think, temporary no wake zones in these situations. All I can tell you is what the law currently says. And again, we do have an ordinance on the books for Dunn's Creek. It's there now, it's been there.
You know, I, I'd like to say this, as a responsible boater, I live on Three Lakes, and we have a canal that we navigate through. Got some signs made up, put them on private property, and you know what? People go slow through that, through that area. They've chosen to take these signs that were provided to them, and they put them up.
And that is another option. I mean, as far as the, not in the river, individual property owners could put signs up to, on their properties requesting no wake. The county could contact those individual property owners and see if they'd be willing to do that. I think you can certainly show a legitimate public purpose. I think you can certainly show a legitimate public purpose in providing those signs, even if it's on private property. I think you can show a legitimate public purpose in doing that.
I agree. Mr. Chairman? I wouldn't think a boater would want to be standing there in their living room, and somebody come by with a wake, and they would understand that. And yes, Mr. Goddard, you have the floor?
Just want to comment that this commission definitely wants to do what we can for the citizens, and, but we really appreciate your legal counsel. I mean, we, I know I do. You have kept me out of trouble many times. With that said, now, are, now, since docks are in sovereign water, can they put a sign on that dock? It's their dock.
That one, I couldn't tell you the answer to on that. I mean, they have a, they probably have a sovereign submerged lease. What limitations there are, I'm not sure, but I will tell you at the end of mine, there's a manatee sign on the end of my dock. I don't know that it's particularly, I think it's an approved sign, but I don't know if the location is approved.
I think there's a law and the spirit of the law, and then we can go, we can encourage people to be neighborly like they need to be. And for some reason, it seems like we live in a world where that doesn't exist anymore. But I would like to see, the question at hand is, does the board want to go forward with a voting restricting ordinance? And you've asked for a roll call vote, so first I need to put it out here for a proper motion to go forward. Commissioners?
Before we do this motion now, we can't just do an ordinance, if I'm misunderstanding Mr. Manning.
We can do whatever we want to do, and then it's our job to see if it's going to be approved by the state, and if it's not, then it's our job to try to make changes in Florida statute that affect the residents of Putnam County. Am I correct?
Well, it's, again, our current ordinance is, is not enforceable according to the terms of the current state law and regulations. And in my honest legal opinion, any revision of that ordinance, even based upon safety, would be equally unenforceable. Until there's a change in the laws.
If we were to move with a ordinance, then can we also move into maybe pushing it through legislation? I mean, is that an impossible dream?
Well, certainly, you know, whatever we do here locally, you can lobby your legislature to make changes to the law.
You know, we, we just left conference last week that we constantly are being attacked by home rule. This is our home, and we should build a rule, and we know what's best for our citizens. And if we write an ordinance that the state of Florida feels is not right, and they won't approve it, again, I know where to take it to, and I know where the Capitol is, and I know how to walk the halls. So, and I'm not afraid to do that, and I think it's time that we start protecting Putnam County citizens and not relying on the state of Florida, one way or the other, to take care of that matter. It's our matter.
Understood, but the state has preempted this issue.
The state has tried to preempt a lot of things, and they're still trying to preempt things. And we talked to a legislator last week that wants to preempt almost everything. But you know what? It's time to dig our heels in and say, "No, you're not going to do that in these counties. We know what's best in our county." Or you buy these people out, and you live there, Mr. legislator, you know, that you want to preempt everything, and watch the tide come in. And that's the bottom line, how I feel. I think it's time to dig in and fight. I grew up in Francis, and I'm not afraid of a good old fight every now and then, and I'm about ready for one. Got my boots on today.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Goddard?
If we moved with this ordinance, this would be just a declaration to move forward with an ordinance that would be somewhat drafted up for our, our needs?
Well, it would be a revision to our current ordinance to address, to make it based upon health and safety of, of the public and boaters, which is, which is what, which is what I would do. I already have a draft prepared. I mean, it's, it's not a big deal. It's just some changes to our existing ordinance to, to make it based upon health and safety.
And all we'd be doing today is giving you the authority to bring it back to us...
Advertise and have a public hearing on the ordinance.
For us to disseminate it and go from there.
Okay. Well, with that, then I'll make a motion that we revise our ordinance to include health and safety, and to be brought up at, is this too soon to be brought up at our next meeting?
Well, it'd be advertised for a future meeting. We'd certainly get that done as quickly as possible. Whether we have enough time to do it before the next meeting, I'm not certainly, certain, but if we can, we will.
Okay.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to direct the attorney to draft an ordinance, or to actually rekind of methathe the current one we have.
I'll second that.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Turner. Roll call vote, Tony?
District one?
Yes.
District two? District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
You have your consensus?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this, this subject matter, not, not to continue discussion on the ordinance itself, but on the manner of the fact that we had a discussion last Tuesday at a workshop, and, and discussion moving forward, and then discussion here today. Let me make it very clear, I have a tremendous amount of my department heads in the audience today, and, and I asked them to stay today if their, if their calendars permitted, and I'm glad to see that they did. I'm also glad to see that they're, they're actively participating. Moving forward, I'm going to make it, my commissioners need to understand that my department heads and my staff are going to do what's necessary to support this commission. We may not always agree, however, it is our role to play as a support for this commission. We, each one of my department heads will have ever, absolutely latitude to make necessary discussion items and viewpoints. But moving forward, you asked here today what was going to be a consensus moving forward, and the consensus moving forward is, we are here to support this commission to move Putnam forward, and it is my task to make sure that, that it's what happens, and I give you my promise, that is exactly what will happen moving forward.
Yeah, Mr. Suggs, thank you for mentioning that, because you do work for all five commissioners, not the majority, and everybody here is 20% invested in this board, and at the end of the day, we move this county forward as a board, right, wrong, or indifferent? You know, we are a board, so thank you. Mr. Clerk of the Court, Tim Smith?
Thank you for being quiet. Well, thank you for the opportunity not to be quiet. Two things, one, if you haven't been by the courthouse, the Maulby Oak, which is our historic oak on that lawn, received some pretty severe damage from the winds and rain, mostly the rain, the weight, and I wanted to thank Public Works for coming down immediately and clearing that out. For you, you that don't know, for about 15 years, Dr. Lippi, who is a state-certified arborist out of St. Augustine, has taken that tree under his care and has done remarkable things to try to extend its life. But I am concerned about the continuing safety of that tree, and I would request, and I think it's already been shared with the county administrator, that they contact Dr. Lippi and see if he can come over and give us an assessment of what we need to do, that unfortunately, the spread of that puts it across a couple of really busy sidewalks, and we certainly don't want, you know, any concerns with the public continuing to be in some potential harm for further decay of that, that tree. You know, it's a, an issue that no one's really wanted to be the one that ultimately says when, you know, the end is there, but you know, it, it does happen to all living things, and at some point, we have to make that choice, but I think the key here is the public safety aspect of that, and anything I can do to assist, I'll be more than happy to. Secondly, I appreciate the comments on the no-wake zone. I live on the river in East Palaca. I don't normally have wake issues, but I did this year when the Coast Guard came by, and they have 80-foot cutters that they take down to the locks at Rodman and give them safe harbor during high wind events, but when they leave, they're going home fast. And my dock, what damage I did have was from those boats. Fortunately, I'm not experiencing the home issues like some of our staff are in those others, and my suggestion would be, is that you commission 24-by-8 signs that says, "High water, be respectful, no wake," and you pass them out up and down Dunn's Creek and let people post them on the end of their docks. I will assure you, if I put a sign on the end of my dock, someone else is not going to come tell me I can't have a sign on the end of my dock. And at least you would have some notice for people, because people in bass boats or whatever, but it doesn't matter what boat, they're going to see those signs, and it will be a reminder to them, because the path you're going down now is probably a, the event will be over by the time you can get some ordinance passed or some effort out there. And then secondly, you know, maybe on a weekend, you have the sheriff with their boat out at the beginning of Dunn's Creek with the light on, and, you know, someone speeding through there, they can go talk to them. I don't think there's anything illegal with that, trying to protect public health and safety. So I think you got some options, so I would encourage y'all, you know, to look at that option and get those signs made and get them out, and it may just be enough of a reminder to stop some damage, so those are my comments, and I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Always a good voice of reason.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Mr. Turner?
I would, is there any way we could commission some of them signs, and maybe we could, if the sheriff was going to be on the, the water this weekend, he could carry some of them along with him, perhaps, if we can get them done that quick, and go ahead and stick some on some of these docks around here? And when, just especially in the areas that are hit the worst, I, I'm pretty sure that the Sheriff's Department and the gaming fish have already been talking to some people, trying to, to get them to, to be nice and slow down as much as they can. They can't, I don't think they can write them a ticket or anything, but they can talk and be, talk to them. Maybe we do need to try to get some of these signs, if we possibly could, and if they go out, let them take them with them and hand them out to some of the people in the most affected areas.
Chief Ramay, come up, you had your hand. Press, you might well come up here, too. You've got the sign shop over there, and, but I don't want metal signs, so we'll talk about that. Chief Ramay?
I just want to throw out there, we do have the Satseman Fire Department that does have a boat, and we certainly would be more than happy to help with that endeavor if we have signs, and I can put the crews out there putting, you know, handing them out, so...
Georgetown Fruitland also has a boat, they might be able to get some down there, too.
Unfortunately, our sign shop is not geared to do this type of signage. We do the metal signs with adhesive, and for us to get 4x8 blank metal sheets would be extremely expensive right now, so I, if anything else we could do to help fabricate or do the signage, you know, help on it, we would, but we're just not geared up for signs of this type.
Mr. Manning, along those lines, we have local sign people that do corrugated signs. Possibly that might suffice. Would we have to tie the wording to an ordinance?
Well...
Or just please slow down?
Yeah, I mean, these are signs that you're going to be providing to property owners if they want to put them on their docks or on their property, so, you know, it, it really isn't, if you tie to our ordinance, you know, the ordinance is unenforceable, so...
Melissa's here.
Commissioners?
We could have a sign that says flooded area, slow down, no wake, something in that nature. Ms. Dillon? Would you contact some local sign shops and see, see what they could produce for the county that says flooded area, no, slow down, no wake, or whatever the case may be, and bring us back some prices on that?
Sure, no problem.
Chairman, I think it needs to be just as big a no-wake as you can, and then they can put a small please at the bottom if they want, but then they can see as far across as you possibly can, a big no-wake. And then, you know, if it turns out we need to talk to the sign police when they show up and try to get after us, then oh, so be it. I'll be happy to show up with you. But if, yeah, maybe even if it was a 4x4 with just a big no-wake on it, and then please at the bottom, or something like that.
All right.
We could certainly check prices, and I could get with Mr. Suggs, and he could share that information.
And he can get with us. Thank you very much.
I will share with you that in our neighborhood, we've made our own signs, and not only do we have them in the canals, but we have them in the streets, because people driving down the streets are flooding homes. In fact, the one that was on my husband's sawhorse but made by someone else was in our street, and it floated away last night.
And I'm walking through my mother-in-law's carport, trying to not make a wake either because of the flooding that's going, that we're trying to avoid in her wash house, so you're exactly right. I'm trying to not make waves, so we have that issue. All right, thank you, Mr. Tim Smith, we appreciate it. Commissioner comments or requests, starting to my left, Mr. Turner. Commissioner Turner?
I'm okay for now, thank you. I think I've already requested all I could for the day.
We're not done with the day, we got two more meetings, so...
No, use it up, use it up.
Commissioner Pickens?
I just want to make a comment and, and thank Bobby Payne and his staff for bringing another farm share program to Putnam County, two weeks' Saturday ago. Semi-load of food came to Browning Pierce School, and the Sunrise Rotary Club was present, Commissioner Turner, Yvonne Parish I know was there, and Honorable Tim Smith, and we're able to, to help over 200 families with a lot of different non-parisual food items, and I guess this would also had a lot of chicken, didn't it, Commissioner Turner? And I was able to take some of the leftover food down to South Putnam Church for their food pantry, and they were very appreciative, so just want to thank Bobby Payne, his staff, Leota Wilkinson for their efforts.
You had to go with the chickens, didn't you?
Yes.
Never. Commissioner Goddard?
Well, I want to just thank everyone for being here, and to go on with Mr. Suggs' comments, I've had to deal with department heads quite often, and they have been, they go out of their way to, to do everything that I've needed, taken care of, come back with the right answers. I mean, they've, they've been great to me. And again, I'm going to thank Mr. Manning for keeping us out of trouble. We do want to get this, and I want to address Mr. Tim Smith, the, that oak is, it's a pride of our county, and I would like to see if, if it has to go, that we do do a memorial there, you know, that's, that's a major part of our community. Now, that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. I want to say, two people that I've never really wanted to have too much of association with when I was in business was, one was my bookkeeper, and one was my attorney. They both have separate jobs, and those jobs were very arms-length away, so we didn't need to go be buddy-buddy. And they have things that we need to do, but I do respect their opinion, and I don't want anybody to ever think that I don't. Last week, at the last meeting, you asked me to take to the Florida Association of Counties and the Small County Coalition, the, the reimbursement from when FEMA reimburses the state of Florida, that the state of Florida timely reimburses counties. We have moved that up the agenda. Mr. Commissioner Turner was in the meeting, and now the Small County Coalition, as long as, and Florida Association of Counties, has that as one of their priorities, because once we said it, believe me, there was a 67 counties clapping and saying amen behind it. So we have moved that up on that priority, and another thing came up about, when we were there, was debris removal, and that's going to be an issue going forward, unless we can find some approach to it, because bigger counties that can afford to pay more might start paying more and leaving us little counties out, and we not, not be able to be reimbursed under the FEMA guidelines, because we don't have any contractors that'll come to Putnam County, and not just Putnam, but small rural counties. So there's an issue on the horizon, and we're aware of that, and through our meetings, we discuss that. discuss that and we are going to bring that to the legislators to let them know that we need a fix and we need a very fast fix on that. Because again, you're not going to, we're not going to be able to compete with the Miami-Dade and the Browards who can afford to pay and get theirs picked up or Duval County. So those were things that we talked about. I would like to, I don't want to end on a bad note, but I do want to end on a note. For a while now, I have been asking for policies, not with this board, let me clarify, a workshop on policies and procedures. It was very frustrating Friday afternoon to get Mr. Manning, he had heard about this ability to call a special meeting, but couldn't, there was no way to put your hands on this document until about, what, 2:15 in the afternoon on Friday that you found this document, the resolution ninety-six dash one seventy.
Well, when I was asked to research it, I was able to locate that document.
So we finally found this document, but it doesn't give the chairman of the board any authority to call a meeting other than the same authority this whole board has as a whole or the individuals have. So it's not, to hear people say, well, the chairman had the ability, I didn't, I don't, I get my power from this board. I don't have any power individually. And I just kind of took offense to that, but I think going into the future, we've got to, as a board, come up with policies and procedures of how this board moves and works. And other places do, other counties have those policies and procedures. We have kind of a hodgepodge of different things. This isn't an ordinance, it's just a resolution. So I would like, and I sent you an email, that basically, in my opinion, I'd like to wipe the slate clean and go, anything that's in the past is in the past and let's try to do something that can protect and enhance our ability to perform our job going into the future. That's what I would like to see.
And I can certainly work with, with your administrator on doing that, to put together policies and procedures, administrative policies and procedures. And part of that is going to be, a necessary part of that, I think, is to, is to codify what, what has been done in the past. I, and, I mean, you may want to just undo everything, but in doing so, you may be undoing things inadvertently. So in my opinion anyways, I think a better approach is, is to have new policies and procedures that, where there may be a conflict in, in old policies and procedures that were by resolution, the new one would, would prevail. To the extent that there's something that's not addressed in a new policy, but exists from years ago, that would, that would still remain on the books. But a big part of this is going to be somebody, and, and Mr. Suggs and I can talk about this, but I think it's going to require some staff to spend some time to go through what happened in the past. I know that Shannon, you know, for many years was kind of the keeper of, of these things and, and there's a couple of hardbound books with, you know, handwritten notes about, you know, at such and such meeting, you know, this resolution, you know, but there's no codification of that and it really is going to take a concerted effort and some time and dedicated staff to, to codify that and to come up with a, a set of policies that your administrator would like to bring to you.
Well, it's so much easier to, to play by the rules when you know the rules. And right now, you know, getting calls that says you can do this and me having enough sense about me saying, I want to see this in writing, that's what happened Friday. And thank God we slowed down enough to make sure we were doing the right thing. And, and whether it be me or any commissioner in this seat, needs to have that ability to do that. So, Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir, I absolutely agree with everything that's been said here this morning and I think Mr. Manning is correct. We need to spend some due diligence and find the information that we already have available to us. The information, whether it's qualified or not, we need to adjust, to address that. And then believe we probably need to sit down as a, as a, as a group and discuss some of the policies that we think that we would like to maybe address or put in place moving forward and so that we're all working together and get these things done, get them, get them drafted in a resolution or ordinance form, get them approved and get them codified and move them forward. Like you said, wipe the slate clean and so we can all kind of, kind of move forward together at the same pace and I think that's a good start.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. All right, then no further comments. We will adjourn this meeting. We do have a two o'clock transportation. We're going to recess this meeting. I got it, I just, I heard that. And we were going to recess this meeting, we do have a two o'clock transportation meeting in the other room and this meeting will be recessed till 5:05 and we'll have our budget meeting in this room. Thank you very much. Meeting for Tuesday, October 3rd. It is our 5:05 budget hearing. I would like to ask Commissioner Goddard to lead us in prayer and keep in mind the citizens that got killed and injured in Las Vegas in that tragic accident. So if y'all would please stand for a moment.
Bow your heads with me. Lord, thank you so much for allowing us to be here and allowing our freedoms that we do have, Lord, and you just be with those people that are hurting in Las Vegas. We understand that there are terrible things that do happen, Lord, and we just, we don't understand, we'll never understand, and we're just so thankful that you were there with us to help us go through these comforts, Lord. And we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. All right, before we go into Item A, we are going to have public comment. Our first public comment, Mr. Bud Surratt. Try to come up and speak to us, sir.
That was awful fast, I'm, I'm not totally prepared for it. I thought it'd take a little longer here, but yeah. I'm Bud Surratt, 121 Lake Shore Drive, West Putnam. And I used to come to these meetings for years and years and years. I missed the last one and I'm here for this one, so my opportunity to give my concerns and my thoughts.
Thank you for being here.
Good to see you, Commissioner. First of all, I'm concerned about the first budget here and where you had seven million dollars less in a balanced budget than you have on this one. I'm concerned about the nearly two million dollars in write-offs, one of them the five hundred thousand for PDF and also 1.2 million dollars in emergency services. I didn't understand some of that. Also, I wondered what was happening on the landfill, you know. You had two groups form that came up with essentially the same thing that was brought out in the public hearings when you were talking about selling the landfill. And I wonder if that is ever going to happen, where you're going to operate at a level that reduces some of the taxes, some of the landfill assessments and some of the dump fees on the citizens. I'm also concerned about the carryover, the large amounts of carryover from the enterprise fund each year. And I don't know what's, why there's such an amount. And also concerned about the large amount of carryover from the Better Place Plan each year. So I know you don't have to respond to those, but those are my concern.
Thank you. We can respond, but, you know, if, Stacy, would you like to, let's start with the carryover Better Place, I think I can handle that. We are trying to move that forward and we had projects under our previous Public Works Administrator that didn't get done and now they are getting out in the open and we're moving those projects out as quick as they can. So I doubt you'll see much carryover next year on that one. I don't know the enterprise fund you're talking about?
Basically, the landfill operation.
There's not a whole lot of money left in it, if you've been watching the meetings, the Hurricane Irma situat, or Matthew, actually, we took money out of the landfill for the future sale, so there's not a whole lot of money in that for the future sale. So that enterprise fund does not have a lot of money sitting in it right now. We did reduce the landfill fees this year from last year, so that did happen. What we tried to do was to find outside waste to bring in, but all the contracts are pretty much tied up, so finding outside waste has been difficult, but we are still looking and we are trying. The two million dollars in write-off, the one for the PDM Bridge, that was, they went bankrupt or left, I just wondered, Stacy, they went-
They vacated their lease and went out of business.
Right, so collecting that money was unavailable to us. A large part, some of that money was, it was uncollected rent and sales tax that we couldn't collect. And the other one is a normal write-off on ambulance bills, but it's not completely a write-off. We still continue to bill the people in hopes to get our money back and that's a normal thing. And the first budget hearing from one to another, I, we've had a lot of changes in our budget based on these hurricanes and nor'easters that's happening and it has really taken a toll on our budget. So we are, we've had more budget hearings this year than I think we've had combined in a long time, so.
Oh, I didn't bring that with me, but we've had, I think, at least twenty different meetings that we were either solely about the budget or we discussed the budget.
Right.
Well, I can understand the meetings, but I just wonder why it was balanced at seven million dollars lower than you balanced it this year in here?
I can explain that.
She can explain that, it's, yeah. Commissioner Turner asked that thing, he had that-
When we, when we presented the balanced budget in July, we had a very rough estimate of what grant projects we were going to have and where we were going to be on our current grant projects. Public Works and I sit down in August and go through all of our grant projects with a fine-tooth comb and then they all get added to the budget. Plus, at the end of August, beginning of September, at that time, we determine what capital that we purchased this year is not going to come in by September 30th and we have to carry over the funds for those. In both cases, that increases both revenue and expense and it drives the budget up, but it's grant money, projects, or it's money that we plan to spend this year that's now part of the cash carry forward and a capital item that didn't come in.
Two million of that was the water management grant that this county was successful in getting?
Four million was appropriations, 4.3.
Run sewer down to Paradise Point, down at Horse Lany Road to get those septic's off there, so that was two million dollars of that, so that's what it is.
Okay. I guess then the 11% increase in the tax, Avalon tax rate, I didn't fully understand why, why, rather than using a rollback rate that you went to the increase in the Avalon tax for property owners.
You want to take that?
In the past several years, we've been using fund balance, which in very rough layman's terms, in essence, is savings. We've been spending out of our savings account to balance our budget and we've come to the end practically of our savings account, so we had to raise the taxes to bring in enough revenue to operate.
I guess I don't have anything else to say about, about the budget. It is what it is, you know, it never seems to go down, it always seems to go up and you're nearly at the maximum, so I guess that's what we have to live with.
Well, I would say stay tuned because we have a plan of action coming-
Really?
And you'll hear that pretty soon. A lot of good things, as you well know, are happening in the Putnam County and we just need to hang on for this year and next year and we intend to do that.
Okay. And I guess the last thing, Commissioner Hargis, I'm concerned about some of the dirt roads that are in MSBU's, specifically 121 Lake Shore Drive. The grass is this high on the sides, kids can't walk, the roads are in narrow spots, trees are overhanging. Do we have a program that, or some funding to take care of that this year?
Historically, the policy on MSBU roads is there's mowing inside those MSBU's, so there is, the contractor that has those MSBU's can mow the grass in them and should be doing that, correct, Press? Thank you.
We have to do that.
Yep, they do. I know out in, in the ones, yeah, and I'll, we can find out why that's not being mowed.
I'd appreciate it because they may have the capability, but we haven't seen it out there.
What's the address on that?
Well, Lake Shore Drive.
Lake Shore Drive.
Actually, it's Hawthorne Mill District, 32640.
That's where you live?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's where I'm at.
Okay, we'll find that out.
I, I just want to bring up a point and maybe Press can take care of it or do something about it. Since they started those, they've lowered the level of the road about eighteen to twenty-four inches below where the water ran off on the soils on each side. And we had to pay and people had to pay when they had the house built for permit, for Public Works permit, to determine what kind of culvert or swell you're going to put in there. And now the water just ponds up on each side of the road, so the road gets narrower and narrower because of ponded water. And so maybe you can take a look at that, too.
Thank you, we will. Mr. Tom, that's the MS, the West Putnam MSBU out there, he's the last road that was taken into that system. Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Mr. Turner.
And good luck on this coming year.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for coming. Is there any other public comment? All right. Stacy, we'll just go to Item A, Papel or Mr. Suggs, I'll pass it on to you. The resolution adopting the final levy of Avalon taxes for fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I'll go ahead and lead our budget officer, Ms. Stacy Papel, answer that question or make the presentation.
I'm going to just read it to you. This public hearing has been advertised in the Platteck Daily News on September 29th, 2017. This public hearing is required by and to be conducted under the provisions of Statute 200.065, Florida statutes. No changes were made to the budget since it was presented on September 19, 2017, but the budget summary reflects a correction to the prior year final budget amount and the percentage of increase. The FY17 budget first public hearing total was reflected in error. The percentage of increase is now slightly lower at 4.95% than the 5.06 presented on September 19, 2017. There were no changes made to the budget as advertised. As duly adopted at the September 19, 2017 public hearing, the countywide millage rate was tentatively set at 9.8892 mills and the fire taxing unit, MSTU, was tentatively set at 1.1000 mills. Pass the mill levy resolution first, then pass the resolution adopting the county's final FY17-18 budget for all funds in the amount of 116,825,109. Approved by motion then, the five-year capital improvement plan.
I do want to point out that, again, we, we have really labored over this budget and I wish if any time we had reserves to work with would be, this would be the year, but we don't. And Hurricane Matthew reimbursement from FEMA, we're fighting very hard to get that back and that could be approximately 1.3 million dollars. We learned today that Hurricane Irma cost us about 1.4 million dollars, not counting the maybe another 300,000 in repairs from the nor'easter after hurricane. So that is about three million dollars right there, which equals about one mill.
That doesn't include a lot of the costs that come out of EOC's preparedness that haven't been submitted yet.
So these storms cost us and, and hope to get them reimbursed. We did go, when we went to the White House, Mr. Manning and I, that was the question that we raised our hand and asked. That was the question we've been raising our hand and asking ever since we've gotten back and that we got to get our money back and we got to make ourselves whole. I will say that we got good things coming on the horizon. You got two solar plants with Florida Power and Light. You've got George Pacific Expansion, 400 million dollars. You've got Georgia Pacific expansion, $400 million. And last week, Mr. Suggs' first weekend here as administrator, $200 million for Seminole Electric Expansion. So we can't give you all the credit, but you were here, so. But I, but what I'm trying to say is, we're here where we're at, and we've got to have a plan to make us better, and we're going to get better, and good things are coming. And again, we just need to hang on for that. Commissioners, I'm going to open it up for any comments that you have. Hearing no comments. Do you want to take these items one at a time and vote? Okay?
You have to.
The chair will entertain a motion for a resolution adopting the final levy of Avalorm taxes for fiscal year 17-18.
It's item number six on page 164, and you have to read all of it, because all of the words have to be read into the record. Or do you want me to read it?
No, that's whoever makes the motion on page 164.
164 of your agenda.
And you have to read item number six.
Item number six is the first resolution.
You got to do A, B, C, all three of them?
All three of them.
Okay. I made the motion that we pass the mill levy resolution first, starting adoption of the following in the motion. A, the fiscal year 2017-18, Putnam County, countywide operating millage rate of 9.8892, which is 11.66% higher than the calculated rollback rate of 8.8568 mills. The fiscal year 2017-18, Putnam County, non-countywide operating millage rate for the fire tax municipal service taxing unit, MSTU, of 1.1000 mills, which is a 2.28% higher than the rollback rate of 1.0755 mills. The fiscal year 2017-18, Putnam County, aggregated millage rate of 10.8582 mills, which is 10.74% higher than the aggregate rollback rate of 9.8052 mills.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
I'll second.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion on this matter? I would like to say that, you know, none of us want to raise taxes, that's for sure, but we do have a commitment from our staff, and Commissioner Libley was very insistent upon this, that we come up with a three-year improvement plan, along with our ordinance that requires us to have a three-year plan to build our reserves. So all the commissioners, I'm sure, want to see this three-year plan to lower taxes going into the future, and Mr. Suggs, I'm going to ask you to commit to that as best you can. I mean, we don't want to hurt the county, and there's no crystal ball here, but going into the future, we've got to be able to give relief back to our citizens of Putnam County.
Mr. Chairman, we've heard this discussion previously when we were in the budget workshop. We are, staff and I have already had some brief conversations. What we'll be doing and working on in the near future is a draft outline of such a plan. What we'll, what you'll see from me in the next few days to a couple of weeks is some invitations to each of the commissioners to come and sit in on, we're going to schedule some meetings and get our stakeholders in place, but I think we need to start having some serious conversations about how we want this plan to look. We need support and buy-in from each one of our commissioners, as well as our constitutional officers on this, but we'll work together very diligently to put a good, solid working plan together with some measurables, some goals and some objectives, that we can see where we're at, not only from year to year, but from, you know, in between, you know, whether it be quarterly or semiannual, how we want to do it. But we need to have a plan in place that has some measurables, but we also need to have a plan that's realistic, and one that we can work together on and have a lot of synergy moving forward, so we can see where we can get in the next three years. That's a commitment from staff to you.
And we're asking our citizens to make an investment in Putnam County. We are making that investment individually. Also, we all own property here, and we just need to commit to something going into the future. Commissioners, any other comments? All right, we have a proper motion on the floor and a proper second, all in favor of the resolution adopting the final levy of Avalorm taxes for fiscal year 1718. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, item number B, resolution adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2017-18 in the amount of $116,825,109.08.
And retroactively back to October 1st, please.
That's right. Yeah, I forgot we're right out. And before anybody freaks out, this was fine, the governor moved us ahead because of the hurricane. We're not behind the times here, or actually, we've got more time than what we're taking. We're doing this pretty quick.
We had another month.
Right, well, we need to move forward, get our departments together, and grow this county.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Libley, for a proper motion.
Could, if I could ask the movement, if he could read as part of his motion, what is listed there under number seven on page 164?
With pleasure, counsel. Pass the resolution adopting the final FY 2017-18 county budget for all funds in the amount of $116,825,109. Retroactively, retroactively effective on October 1st, 2017.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner.
I'm tired, I can't even read.
That's okay.
I'll second.
We have a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. Any further discussion in the matter? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, like sign, the ayes have it. Motion to approve the five-year capital improvement plan.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the five-year capital improvement plan.
Second.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Libley. Any further discussion? I have one item, and I have seen items fall off of this and seen them fall on.
What's your question?
I've talked to Mr. Suggs about it in detail. I would like to see items stay on as much as possible, and I think our departments deserve that, but I know the economy, and we have to move things around as best we can, but that's all I got to say about that.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We have a proper motion to accept and a proper second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, like sign. The motion to approve the five-year capital improvement plan passed. And that's the end of our thing? What's that?
Mr. Chair, we have a couple other items, if you don't mind.
No.
Just some housekeeping items. I went ahead and extended the state of emergency day for Putnam County. It was due today. We went ahead and extended that. In our conversation that we had earlier in our two o'clock meeting, we have got some resolution of that as well. We're still active under the state emergency with Irma. We're going to be moving forward on processing whatever costs we have associated with our roads today, still utilizing that state of emergency that we're under now with Irma.
Good job.
Yep, very good job.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Suggs, were you able to determine whether we needed to do a second state of emergency for the, for the nor'easter stuff that came after or not?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Turner, we have, after meeting with Mr. Romei and Mr. Simpson this afternoon, the active state of emergency under Irma will suffice for what it is that we need to do at this time.
Thank you.
The only thing we really need to do is make sure we document, and I know Press understands that, everybody does, the repairs for the nor'easter versus, okay, Irma. So, all right, is there any other business to come before this group? Okay, Chief Romei, please come up. Got to be glad Commissioner Goddard didn't have the gavel, he would have already.
Now, this is a good thing. The disaster recovery center at the fairgrounds is open, eight to eight, seven days a week. Please tell everybody to keep coming. Ryan had to go over there and help out with a couple of things, but we've been averaging over 100 of our folks going in, getting registered and all that a day. Today, we've seen over 200, which the total is well over 10,000 folks that have been approved for FEMA assistance, individual assistance for way more than $3 million. So just wanted to put that out, and hopefully, everybody will continue. If you have any damage whatsoever, have any questions of FEMA, any of that kind of stuff, they're there at the, at the new building at the fairgrounds.
Thank you.
How long will it be open?
Indefinitely. We don't have a date yet on, on closing yet.
So not indefinitely, just a while longer?
We're trying to keep it indefinitely, sir. Originally, there was some short-term dates they gave us, we pushed back, and they've extended those, but they haven't put a date. It will be, you know, another, you know, we're hoping another couple of weeks at least.
Well, that's, that's, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that's the message I'd like to get out, is we're hoping for another couple of weeks.
Correct.
The reason why we don't want somebody to miss it, thinking they have three or four weeks, they need to try to get the time to get on down there and do it.
And with the time being 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, you know, including Saturday, Sunday, then, you know, it's, we tried to make it available, and FEMA tried to make it available for everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Chair? Yes, Mr. Libley, please.
Quinn, commercial folks, what would be their procedure to receive help?
Businesses can go over and see FEMA there also. They're doing business and individual there.
Okay, thank you.
So one-stop shop.
One-stop shop. We're trying to get Red Cross to be there also. They've had some additional programs, but we're still working on that.
Good deal.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
You may.
How are we getting as far as a response to residents bringing vegetative debris out to the, to the site that we set up out there at the fairgrounds? Are we getting a good response?
I would prefer to Mr. Gast on this.
Mr. Gast, I have a question concerning that, so come on up. That was going to be my, one of my questions.
We are getting more and more consistently as the word gets out more and more. We've had several people bringing multiple loads out, so they are starting to utilize the facility there at the fairgrounds.
Good, thank you.
Are we running out? I got a call from a former commissioner this morning asking that he had heard we were running out of room, and I had not heard that. We're not running out of room, are we?
We're getting a lot of debris in. This week, it was over 18,000 cubic yards. Last week was 17,600 cubic yards. It's a lot of debris, but they're getting the grinder in, they're going to grind it and get it out of there, and make more room for more stuff to come in.
And tell the general public what they're going to do with the wood chips after they grind them. This is what's exciting.
We have requested that the contractor make an agreement with Georgia Pacific and recycle that material as feedstock for their boilers, and actually have it as a recycle credit, we hope.
Good. So we turn Hurricane Irma into toilet paper. I love it. I absolutely love it. I do. I could see it on the plastered on the side.
It's a, it's a good, good place for it.
That's it, exactly.
And I think one of the takeaways from those numbers is, is that we're getting a lot of debris moved, so good job. As difficult as it is around the state to get the contractors, Mr. Gast has done a good job on staying on our contractor and helping him to get subcontractors to actually get this debris moved, so. And then also, I want to say, good job to Quinn and Ryan and Paul Flado for getting the word out for the citizens to be able to haul their debris out there. I think, I think it's all working the way we were hoping it would. Maybe not perfect, but it's working, so.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, one final question for Mr. Gast, if I could. A while back, we were in a meeting, and you mentioned that the first time around, they'll kind of go around the county one time, and then at some point in the future, I've noticed that some people's yards were so full in front, there was nowhere to put the trash, and so they filled them up. Now they've picked them up, and I've noticed they went ahead and cleaned up the rest of their yard. And so do we have any kind of, just a ballpark schedule on when the second round might be?
We haven't even completed the first round in the county yet, so.
I mean, do you think it'd be more than a month?
My estimate is this will probably take a minimum of three months to make our, our complete rounds.
First round?
No, the first round, I'm hoping that we'll have done probably within the 60 days of the event. Then you're, when you physically go down all those roads, you can kind of spot how much has still got to be moved out, and some places will only need two rounds, some will need three. And then after that, we will have the punch list items where people were the latest. We'll, we'll put a date out when we get closer and get more knowledgeable, saying, this is the drop-dead date. You get it out by this time, or else there's a possibility it will not be picked up, and we'll work that way to try to keep everything flowing and get everything out as quick as we can, and get it up as quick as we can. But we're going to have probably, I'm thinking, two and a half times what we had in Matthew, so it's going to be quite a cost impact to us.
If we, and the ground's so soggy, we might still see more come.
It, it's soggy. My trailer at the landfill, a big sinkhole opened up, our whole foundation has collapsed, the trailer's crinkling on the side and everything else, and.
Well, don't stay there. Don't get swallowed up by the sinkhole.
I told them I'll just take a rope and tie it to the front of the trailer. If it goes in, somebody can pull me out.
All right, thank you, Mr. Libley.
Thank you.
I want to end this with one thing. Stacy Papel, thank you. I know that in the past few months that you've, you had us drinking out of a fire hose, and it's been very, very educating and very worthwhile. Mr. Manning, same with you. I know that your plate's been full, and you take, both of y'all took on major duties, along with our staff, too. I see Mr. Thompson's in the audience, and he's trying to nod out a little bit. I know you're tired, everybody. Mr. Suggs, we're looking forward to the future of Putnam County, and I believe we've got the right man to go forward at this point.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that very much, and, you know, staff and I are dedicated to doing what's right for this county. We'll be fine. We're going to get some things done. We're all going to work very diligently on doing the things that need to be done for this county, so we're going to be okay. There was one other thing that came out this morning, this meeting, signs for docks.
Yes.
We've got an original quote, I guess it is, for some 18 by 24, like the little yard signs that you stick up. Very nominal cost, I think we can get 100 of them for 400 bucks, and get them printed up. We can hand those out. Did we get a chance to get any 4 by 4s, Ms. Stacy?
Yeah, here's an email. Although I don't see the attachment.
There's the attachment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, 18 by, I'll just go down the list, 18 by 24 for 100 would be $400. 24 by 36, 100 would be $800. 32 by 48 for 100 would be $1,850.
And with those larger signs, that does not include frames or stands?
That's correct.
That would be additional.
We don't want additional. They can attach them how they choose to do that, right?
The, the smaller signs are like yard signs.
Yeah, but that might not be seen. I like the middle, the middle one.
I don't know that we need 100 of them either, the bigger, the larger one. I mean, I think we need, definitely need some yard signs for the sheriff department to pass out. They graciously, I understand, have agreed to do that, and we appreciate it, and the, but if we had maybe the 100 of them and maybe just, I don't know, 20 or 30 of the larger ones to put in key locations, well, I don't think we need 100 of the big ones, just.
I agree.
Just the ones like where you're driving up and you want the no wake to start, that's where you'd need a bigger sign.
Okay, well, we are welcome. Any suggestions on how many you want, and we can go ahead and get this taken care of, because we've got quotes. I mean, if you want the 24 by 36, I would certainly suggest the smaller signs, we need to do it in a bulk of 100, because it's cost prohibitive to do it in less increments.
What colors are we looking at?
Oh, I know, sir, I haven't got that involved. I just got your sign price. Sorry.
The biggest no wake, yeah, orange and blue.
Obviously.
Like orange and blue.
This was done after I left today, wasn't it?
Yes, sir, it was.
Did you give any thought, though, to growing immune to these signs? If you pass them out to the public, do you really think they're going to go back in when the water recedes? They won't. They'll stay out there, and the public will come, the boating public, will come immune to these signs, and then when you really want them... to these signs and then when you really want them to work, they're not going to work. We discussed all this in the past, is all I'm saying.
Well, we had a-
We felt that the signs on your Crescent Lake side and the entrance to Dunn's Creek from the St. John's River side handled by somebody, and back then it was FWC, but that didn't work out. But if you don't take control of the signs, I don't think they're going to be effective. That's my thought.
Yes, Sheriff, come up. I, I do think we could probably keep a list of where these signs go and who's got them and we could say, look, you know, possibly the water's resided.
In an earlier conversation with Mr. Suggs, I had agreed that we would be more than happy to assist with the distribution of those signs. Along with that, it's very easy for us to maintain a spreadsheet of the locations where we actually distribute the signs and place them. So I think that we can very easily go back out and collect those signs once the, once the necessity for the no wake courtesy signs have-
Don't you agree?
I, I do, I do.
Sheriff, that's the only way it's going to be effective.
Sure.
I like the idea of multiple signs, like you are saying, though, they will get the message.
Sure.
They'll be peppered going down the creek, you know, every, every quarter mile or less, you know, blocks, really, they're going to see these signs to remind them to slow down, but if you don't pull them up.
And if I may, Miss Papel, was that quote from a local vendor, so if we need to order more than-
Melissa?
We have, we have that ability.
She is ready.
Although I, I will say that there are streets in my neighborhood that would like to have the signs on the street.
Well, if we buy 100 of them, we should be able to put a couple of them out on the street.
100. I'll put one up as a jet ski down your road.
Yeah.
Ms. Dillon.
Yes, the quote was from a local vendor. We, I talked to four local vendors today and the quotes that Mr. Sugg provided you was the most cost-effective quotes that we received.
So board, Mr. Suggs has the authority with three quotes to go ahead and do that, so what's your pleasure to-
Can we continue with the discussion?
Yeah, but I think, I thought we were done.
No, no.
Okay.
We have a couple of little items here. Number one, how many of the 24 by 36?
I think 100.
100.
Want to send 100 of each?
No.
So let's have a brief discussion-
100 of the 18 by 24s.
If we can about production time on these signs, too. I think Melissa has some additional information she can share with us about that so we can, we can plan to distribute them.
The, first of all, the costs that, the prices that were quoted is for a one-sided sign and one color. So we were talking about a white sign with red lettering, if that's agreeable. As far as production time, it will take between a couple of days and a week to produce all of the signs, but they told me if we, if they can produce, you know, a little bit along, they'll give us a little bit along, so we can go ahead and start producing and distributing. But it will take at least a week to get them all done.
I'm just looking at Ms. Dillon's notes here and this, this is actually a vendor that we have, that we personally have a good working relationship with the sheriff's office with, they're very quick and efficient in their work and we have the ability to go by there and pick up signs on an as-needed basis as they produce them, so we can easily get them distributed.
And we get some here so people can come by and we can keep a list of those people, too, so.
Ms. Dillon, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, please.
Ms. Dillon, what was the largest size sign that you were able to get quoted?
The largest size I got was 32 inches by 48 inches. They really discouraged against going bigger than that unless you were going to build a custom frame to hold the sign and poles to put the signs in the ground.
These core class signs?
Yes.
I have a whole shed full of frames that'll fit those signs. Trust me.
Somebody with hammers and nails.
How much were they if we just bought them in somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 or 30 of them or something? Because I, I think the yard signs would be more easily to use and what have you, so I'm for the 100 of them, but I think we need a few of the larger ones just to put out in strategic locations like maybe the first one coming into the area where you're trying to slow the people down.
My personal recommendation would be that we go no larger than 24 by 36. The statutory signs that are used to enforce a no wake zone are no larger than 36 inches.
Okay, how much were them?
For less than 50, they're 13, was this the one you're talking about?
Yes, the 24 by 36.
$13 each, but then you would have to buy a frame and each frame is $16 each.
Well, I don't know that we'd have to buy a frame for them. It could be that they could put them on a dock where they have handrails or where they have something in, in, in locations that would, would adhere to them and, and give the ones that don't have the facilities to put it up, give them the ones with the frame, the little yard signs with the frame. So we'll pepper the area with them at the 100, excuse me, at the 100 and then maybe just buy a couple of dozen of those bare ones and to give out for just strategic locations, if you think that would be adequate, Sheriff.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I, I wouldn't, like I said, I just wouldn't recommend going any larger than the 24 by 36. And I like the idea of putting some signs here, although I would caution you against that because we're going to run into a control issue with the signs there as Commissioner Lible spoke of earlier. My preference would be that if someone is in dire need of these signs, to allow us to go out and make a personal assessment and see if we think it's appropriate to place one there and based on that assessment, we'll, we'll make a determination whether or not the sign should be placed.
And if it's a local vendor doing them here locally, we can always add more as we go.
Absolutely, easily.
I truly appreciate you saying you'll do that for us. I know how much of a job you just took on.
All right. Okay. All right. Commissioner Goddard, are we done with the conversation?
I think we, we decided 100 18 by 24s and 30, about 30 24 by 36s.
Is that a motion?
It could be.
Okay.
With white with red lettering on it.
So you're going to form that?
I'll make a motion that we purchase 100 18 by 24 signs and 30 24 by 36 signs that will be white with red lettering.
Okay, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard.
I'll second that motion.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Hearing none or seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it.[1782.12]